Alright, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Calling to order. Planning and zoning board meeting, regular meeting twenty twenty-four dash ten. And it'll be my privilege to lead us in pledge of allegiance. I ask for a roll call, please.
Yes, um, Mr. Borma.
Present.
Mr. Good has asked to be excused, Mr. Jaffe has also asked to be excused. Ms. Jordan.
Present.
Mr. McLeod.
Present.
Mr. Olszewski.
Present.
Mr. Warner.
Present.
And our school board appointee position is still vacant and deputy, deputy, I'm sorry, excuse me. Chief Deputy City Attorney Michael Rodriguez is present. We do have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the meet, the minute meetings, the meeting minutes for regular meeting twenty twenty-four dash zero seven?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McLeod, seconded by Mr. Warma, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. For the benefit of the applicants in the audience, the planning and zoning board is an advisory board comprised of unpaid volunteers. The meeting procedures will be as follows. The land development division staff will present the staff report for each case. Board members will then be asked if they have any questions for staff. The applicant or their representative will then be asked to approach the podium and present any information germane to the case and to answer any questions from the board. The floor will then be open to public comment. We'll first hear from those wishing to speak in favor of the application and then those in opposition. For all proceedings, all applicants and speakers from the audience must sign speaker or oath cards located in the side of the room and at the podium. Please print legibly on the, on the card and speak directly into the microphone. State your name, address, and your comments for the record. As a courtesy, we ask that if there is a group of people from a neighborhood who may have similar comments, you informally appoint a spokesperson to clarify your views. After public comments, I'll bring the case back to the board. At this time, the floor will be closed and no further comments will be heard from the audience. I'll then call for a motion and a second, at which time the board may have additional comments or further discussion. We'll then call for a vote. Decisions of the planning and zoning board are then forwarded to the city council for their final disposition. Thank you for your attendance tonight and for your cooperation in adhering to these meeting guidelines.
Mr. Chair, prior, prior to moving on to the agenda, I'd like to, to, um, as I usually do, preface that all the items on tonight's agenda are quasi judicial in nature and therefore I ask the members of this board to disclose any ex parte communications you may have had with anyone regarding this, any item that is on the agenda. If you have had so, please identify the agenda item and who you have spoken to. If you have not, I will accept your silences, compliance with that.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Seeing none, we'll get into our business.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, staff would like to recommend that we move uh, the unfinished business item Z twenty-four zero 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 four, the rezoning from RM ten to RM fifteen to the, uh, back to the agenda with, um, behind five and before six. Just to take all of the rezonings together. This is just for your consideration. Um, if the board would like to do that, then we will have to, uh, have a motion and a vote on that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, do I hear a motion for such?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Jordan, it's seconded by Mr. McLeod to move our old or unfinished business item in between items five and six under new business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes unanimously, which brings us into our new business. And it brings up new business item number one, which is case Z two four dash zero 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 two. And I'll defer to Ms. Frazier, perhaps? Ms. Jefferson, to Ms. Jefferson, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Board Chair and members of the board. For the record, I'll be Ms. Jefferson. And tonight I'm presenting to you an application Z twenty-four dash zero 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 two where the applicant Royal Wash PSL is requesting a rezoning from general commercial to community commercial. The subject site is located at the intersection of Babcock Street and Malabar Road on the southeast corner and is slightly larger than an acre. To analyze this case, staff referred to chapter one eighty-five of the zoning code, which states that all proposed amendments to the land development code shall be submitted first to this board and then this board will analyze and make a recommendation to the council using the factors of analysis found in section one eighty-five point two zero one C two. Though, uh, the applicant's responses to the factors of analysis are provided in your staff report on pages two and three. In staff's opinion, the applicant's responses to the factors of analysis strongly supports the request for the rezoning to CC District. And the request is consistent with the land development code stated intent for the community commercial district. Staff also considered consistency with the comp plan and findings showed the request is consistent with the future land use map. Policy FLU flu dash one two A B, objective flu one point four. Policy flu one point four A. Objective flu one point eight. And with the property rights element, policy PPR dash one B. Staff is recommending approval of this zoning request as we have found it in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Members of the board, having heard the staff report, are there any questions for the staff before we hear from the applicant? Alright, seeing no questions, we'll look at a brief pause, get the presentation.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to do it with this and I'll just use my mouse, so I apologize.
Okay, and that's the only slide for that one. Okay, so that being said, will the applicant or their representative, please approach the microphone and give your presentation.
Good evening, my name is Will Anderson, my law firm is Mangrove Title and Legal P L L C. We're located at fifteen thirty U S Highway one in Rockledge, Florida. We are here on behalf of the applicant Royal Wash P S L L L C. Um, as you likely saw on your agenda, we have two items, uh, this evening. The first one is considering, uh, changing our current zoning from general commercial to community commercial. Um, as Ms. Jefferson pointed out, um, we have met the factors and she has recommended approval of this. The overarching plan here is to rezone this to community commercial so that there can be a conditional use which will allow for retail, um, automotive fuel sales. Um, here with me tonight, I have Mr. Alex Benoit. Um, he is our client. Um, also with us, we have, uh, Thema. She is our engineer who has been working on the conceptual plan and then I also have several gentlemen from our end user, um, which is seven eleven. Um, as mentioned, if you look at the map there, you can see at this intersection, all the other properties, if you're standing on the corner, all the other properties, um, across the street, they're already zoned, community commercial. So this use is going to be compatible with that. So, let me just check my notes here. And that's really about it that I have on this particular one. There's some more stuff as to the second agenda item, so if you folks have any questions, I'd love to give a shot at answering them.
I'll just note that for the record, we don't have any letters in the file pertaining to this case. And I will ask the board if there's any, uh, questions for the applicant at this current time.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Warner.
Um, in your plans to move forward, I noticed that it's, it do say Royal Car Wash, so are we also looking at putting a car wash on that site or is it just going to be, um, retail fuel?
If you, you might, may recall that, um, a number of months back, there was a proposal to do a, uh, text amendment to allow for a car wash on this site. However, the city council did not allow that to go forward. Um, and so our clients had to pivot from saying, okay, we're going to do a car wash to saying, we're going to do retail automotive fuel sales.
And, and, and switching everything over to the commercial, to, to, I'm sorry, to, um, neighborhood commercial. It will allow you to be able to do, go ahead and do the, um, retail.
Uh, yes, a, a, a conditional, a permitted conditional use in a community commercial district is retail fuel sales. Um, and as I'm sure you'll hear on the second agenda item, there's a set of criteria that we have to meet to be able to do that. And we're meeting those criteria, um, for that conditional use, but obviously we can discuss that on the second agenda item.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions for the applicant? I will just briefly ask the somewhat obvious, that is not a use that is compatible with general commercial, hence why we're on this first case.
Perhaps, that's right. Um, so that's why we had to say we need to rezone it and then once we rezone it, we need to move on to, can we get this conditional use?
Understood. Alright, so thank you very much, sir, for your, uh, presentation and for those answers. Uh, that being said, and no further questions, uh, seen from the board, I'd like to open the floor to public comment at this time. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Alright, we're going to run it, uh, right to left, sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Thomas. I am a business owner in this area where they're requesting the rezoning to occur. Uh, the area, uh, I've been a resident in this area for fifteen years. I've owned a business, I've operated a business on the south side of Malabar Road where this is located. The area is not built for any additional traffic. Half of what they're requesting in this zoning change would have a gas station with the people leaving the gas station into an alleyway. This alleyway is not designed for any sort of traffic. It is already, uh, too congested. I have a problem in my own business with, uh, cars using our parking lot as a way to cut through in order to avoid the congestion that exists there. So the referenced, uh, businesses on the north side and on the west side of this intersection, these areas are already built for traffic. Where they're asking for the zoning change to be, it's not designed, uh, for this. Now, if their plans had all traffic entering and leaving on the side of Malabar and not entering into the alleyways of our business area, it would probably work, but the plans that they've proposed in the zoning change means that an area that already cannot handle the traffic we have will then have even additional traffic of the hopefully successful business, we'd want all businesses in Palm Bay to be successful, uh, filling our areas with cars. It's just not the right area to change the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Sorry, sorry, your hand? I was just pointing to the next, thank you.
Butcher ran two nineteen Trenton Avenue. He kind of stole my thunder, but, uh, I have the same complaints. I have friends that have businesses right across the street from where they're proposing to put this. And like he says, the traffic, if this is approved, is just going to disallow those businesses to be able to get their cars in and out. Uh, do you want the name of the business or that's across from them where they're at?
You free to share with whatever you'd like, sir.
Cool Cars is the name of the business. Uh, the owners were supposed to be here tonight, but I don't think they could find an entrance door. Took me, took me forever to find it. The other thing is, like this gentleman just said, is the entrance going to be on Babcock? Is the entrance going to be on Malabar Road? Uh, and if you're familiar with that area, it's a terrible place to try to get in and out of. Uh, especially with the traffic going up north and south on Babcock. It's, and there's already one gas station right across the road from where they're proposing to put this one. So the traffic is the big problem with where they're going to put it, not knowing where the entrance and exits are going to be. And like the other gentleman said, it's an alleyway. It's not even a street that's behind them. So I just, I think it's a bad idea, uh, and not a good place to put a business. Let's see. It's where the, uh, car wash is, right there where it says Royal Car Wash, right? Yeah, that alleyway and then these businesses right here across the street from them, it'll jam up people to be able to get to their business. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Sir?
Bill Baton, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. Very similar statements, but mine's going to question initially on the initial change. So my statement is, we have a commercial business that he wants to rechange the zoning for so he can have another commercial business. Then, and if he gets that changing, he's going to ask for a, uh, conditional use in that new business, in that new zoning. So my question is, if that's what you're, all you're doing, why didn't you just ask for the conditional use in the exact same zoning you have? Why change it twice? Because you have to meet a conditional use anyhow for either one. So why not just proceed with conditional use and initial charge? That's the first, first question. Why change our, our maps to make them coincide with what a new, what another business wants? The other question, since they're talking about item number two, was the same thing. Exiting out, if you want to go, uh, west, you have to cross three lanes of traffic, and that's on Babcock Road, in order to make the left-hand turn lane, add a stop traffic light that only has approximately a hundred and fifty feet. It's very, very dangerous. That's number one, to come out on that side. Number two is the individuals leaving out onto Malabar Road. That is also the section where people cross from Malabar, cross Babcock Road. That's the way you, if you're not in the right-hand lane that goes through, the left-hand lane is a left turn only, so the people get in the left turn only, and then they try to speed up and merge, excuse me, try to speed up and merge in right in front of these businesses right there. So it's people trying to rapidly change lanes. So there's definitely some safety hazards with that. Alright, and then the other question looking at it was where the storm drain was that runs through the property, that's a major storm drain. Is that going to be requiring, and that'll be more for the public works, where it's going to be, uh, if you can't see it on these drawings, that's going to be a massive reconstruction in that area if that's going to have to happen because they're already having problems with the storm water there as it is. So those are the questions. Maybe somebody will have the answers, but I can't see changing a zoning, then ask for a conditional, then rezone it and then ask for a conditional use. Why not just ask for the conditional use in the beginning and then we can eliminate all of this into one reading? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this request?
Hello, my name is, uh, Steve Abbott. I own Cool Cars, which is directly behind the building in question. Um, and the problem that I'm having with this is the alleyway use. Um, in the mornings, all the businesses on that alleyway uses that as for loading and unloading vehicles. Um, we have Palm Bay Aluminum down the road, which has four or five trucks plus they get deliveries in the mornings. We have cars that come and go to get dropped off for repairs. Um, and there's numerous other businesses down there. Um, so my biggest question was with how they're going to utilize that alleyway for access and entryway. Because without that, I don't think they'll be able to use that property for what they want to do with it. So that was one of the problems, that question I had with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none? We'll now close the floor to public comment. Oh, yeah, sorry, didn't look that direction. My apologies.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, we are a family business that is run around that area, that back road that everyone's talking about. Uh, it's a landscaping business where we load and offload with big machinery, rocks, gravel, boulders, sod. Um, and so it could kind of be potentially dangerous having, if that, you know, traffic flows heavier in that side of the alleyway, you know, it just could be a, pretty much dangerous for us, our employees and whoever's driving that way, especially if we're loading and offloading, um, with these big machines.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you please, um, get their name and?
Oh, yes, if you could just state your name and, and the address of your business for the record.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Melanie Ventura.
And where's your business?
One three seven eight Malabar Road.
Beautiful, thank you so much. Anybody else? Alright, that said, I'll ask the applicant to, uh, respond to these inquiries.
So, um, traffic, that's a concern. So what have we done already? Well, we've done a traffic study and we've made a traffic memo. And we've also made a site plan that takes the traffic into consideration. So our traffic mem- memorandum, um, that we have submitted, uh, outlines that there's not going to be any kind of impact as it pertains to Malabar Road. To address the questions, where's, where's the turn going to be? Well, the primary entrance to the site will be off of Malabar Road. Um, it's not going to be off of Babcock. And so based on the traffic analysis that has been conducted and the engineering reports, we're not foreseeing any issues arising from that. I would also hazard to guess that, you know, right now this building is vacant, this part, you know, this building's not being used. So any sort of usage whatsoever is going to be some form of impact as to traffic for these folks. That's, you know, if, if we, you know, opened up a restaurant or some other permissible use in there, there's going to be traffic impacts on there. And so I don't think that should be a dispositive consideration, especially when we are going to be working with the city FDOT, all the relevant parties to make sure that any kind of traffic impacts are going to be minimized, um, throughout the site planning process.
Okay, um, before you go, does the board have any, uh, further questions of the applicant, Mr. McLeod?
Given the concerns of the businesses close by, is your plan, your traffic plan avoids the alleyway? Uh, and I would like to hear from the engineer.
Yes.
Because if the concern is increased traffic in the alleyway, I'm sure you could come up with a plan for egress and ingress that avoids the alleyway and consistent with the, um, the usage in that area.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Thamie Det. I'm with Thomas Engineering Group. Do you need, do you need me to state address?
Please.
One five zero two West Fletcher Avenue, Tampa, Florida. Three three six one two. Um, so for the current site plan that we are showing, I know we haven't presented it up here, but, um, we are showing one access, uh, proposed access on Malabar Road and two proposed accesses on the alleyway. And, um, uh, like our attorney has, uh, mentioned, we are working with FDOT to come up with the best, uh, best traffic design to come up with for the area as well as, um, the businesses in the alleyway. We are unable to provide a direct asset, access on Babcock Street based on the intersection requirements and the driveway separation requirements, hence the, uh, direct access to Malabar. And with that being said, we don't have enough, um, driveway separation even for Malabar, so we are providing, um, an, an alternative per FDOT request for, uh, seventy-three feet and just to, not to, uh, get into details, but we are providing, uh, adequate throat debt for the Malabar Road. With that being said, we haven't had any specific comments from FDOT or the city since we haven't submitted formally yet for a site plan review um, or access review, drainage review or anything like that, but we can definitely take into consideration. But with that being said, if we are to lose both of the accesses to the alleyway, we would just be left with one, which would be proven difficult for the, uh, fuel truck deliveries and, um, you know.
Let me follow up. Is there an opportunity to widen the alleyway?
Um, that, I would leave that to, um, my client and their attorneys. I mean, if I'm, if I'm told to do so, I would be more than happy to, but, um, I think that decision will come from the authority having jurisdictions as well as the clients.
Thank you for that feedback. Is there any further questions for the applicant? Mr. Borma?
I think I'm, I'm opposed to this mainly because if FDOT hasn't signed off on it yet, how can they expect us to vote on this until they come up with a, uh, solution for that alleyway, whether?
So, uh, right, so, uh, just to?
Please, please jump onto the mic, take turns, yeah.
I'm sorry about that. So we're not at that stage yet. What we're here about right now is changing this from a general commercial to a community commercial district. So, once we get past this step, then obviously we're going to go to the city council and then once that's done, then we're going to be getting into site planning and getting all the relevant actors and regulatory bodies involved with it. So here tonight, we're not here to decide, you know, is traffic good or bad or not? What we're here about is, can we change this from a general commercial to a community commercial that is consistent with all the other properties around that intersection?
Our job here as a board are, is for the citizens, citizens
Yes, sir.
of the city. And we represent them. And city council can pretty much, you know, they're elected, they can do what they please. But as far as I'm concerned, it's a no-go on this. Thank you.
If I, if I could add something to this, we have had multiple meetings with FDOT and the traffic engineer on our team and they, we've had two pre-application meetings as of date and, um, they have given their, I guess, uh, blessing, informal blessing to move forward with our site plan as far as the access goes, um, at this point in time. Like I've mentioned before, we haven't had any formal approvals yet because we are so, um, you know, early into the, uh, submittal process and such, so, um, I just would like to add that point in there.
Yes, and I repeat again, we're just here to advise city council. So if they would like to go ahead with this, that's their priority. But as I see for the citizens, it's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borma, and thank you for your answers to those inquiries. Are there further questions for the applicant? Mr. Warner?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please.
Yes, um, uh, obviously, yeah, the big concern here is the alleyway and the, and the, the, the traffic flow. But one of the questions I do have is, um, obviously this building will be torn down. And I'm sure that it's, uh, somewhere in the engineering and with the site plan somewhere, uh, you already, you all have already established where these tanks are going to go. So, um, giving where those tanks, where those tanks, uh, are going to be, then that, that also is going to also condense the, the use of the property, property just a little bit more because of where the tank's going to have to go in order to provide the fuel. So, then, um, uh, again, just looking at this, then how would you all come up with a, uh, uh, come up with a different, a different eager, uh, ingress or egress in order to, uh, you know, to, uh, working around those tanks?
Uh, so, um, the current iteration of our site plan has kind of the, the tanks kind of tucked away on the east side, um, across from, uh, the proposed drive file that, uh, it's, I know it's, um, kind of difficult to explain without any visuals, but, um, the tanks shouldn't be, um, an issue with ingress and egress for that alleyway, um, access point. The issue is with the, uh, fuel truck delivery and how it's going to maneuver the site itself. We are going to need at least, uh, two access point for that to happen just because, um, you know, the length of the fuel trucks, it's not going to be accommodated by, um, the space that we have minus the The space that we have minus the building um around the site, so. Um, I guess to answer your question, um we'd have to go into further analysis to try to figure out. Um, if the uh if the priority is to um, you know, minimize the access point on the alleyways, how we can go forward with that, so. Did that answer your question? Sorry, I don't have a definitive answer, but um. We can definitely look into it if that's where we plan to move forward.
Thank you and thank you, Mister Warner. Miss Jefferson, you have something to add?
Do, uh Mister Chair, I just want to um remind the board that this particular item that we are talking about now. Is the rezoning from general commercial to community commercial and we are held to. The factors of analysis for decision-making on this particular application. Ideally, we'd be able to put on blinders and not have this application in mind. We we have to look at this on its own. And so I believe this discussion is taking us in a direction. Uh where it would be more fruitful in the next item for the conditional use request. Because the rezoning is held to the factors of analysis.
I very much appreciate you grounding us in that, Miss Jefferson, and let me just ask you a brief follow-up question. If perhaps the board is to uh, you know, have a motion and pass a motion to recommend for denial of this request. We would still entertain that case tonight, right? So that we can give both recommendations to council, it wouldn't render the second case moot. We'd still have the chance to talk through those things.
Uh, that would be for Mister Attorney.
And I'll defer to him then.
That is correct, you would be rendering two recommendations because you are not the final decision. On this, on this matter and but the recommendation that you present forward to the city council. Does again, has to be based on the scope of review that you have based on the application presented to you now. So if you. Elect to decide to vote to deny this application of zoning, you have to. Bring forth the reasons why for denial based on the factors for rezoning and not other factors outside of that. Cause then you start running into issues where your your decisions are not based on competent substantial evidence. And that can be subject to to judicial review. So when it, that's why. You may take into consideration all the information and take all the the facts, however, your decision. Has to be supported by competent substantial evidence and that that decision is based on the factors and the sub- the scope of review. Or in this case, an application for a change of zoning. In the next matter, your review will be based and your decision has to be based on the the scope of review for a conditional use. And does the applicant meet the standards that the code has set forward? To to obtain a conditional use, or in this case, has the applicant brought forth the standards as provided in the code? For an amendment to the zoning code. So it's uh because you sit in a quasi judicial nature, you are basically judges. And your decision has to be, you're you're basically deciding upon the evidence presented by staff, evidence presented by the applicant. And that then whatever your decision is, has to be based on that evidence that is presented and whether it fits into the scope provided under the code.
I reiterate my thanks and gratitude for the for the grounding uh to both you and Miss Jefferson. Thank you very much, Mister Attorney. Um, so that said, I I just be remiss if I didn't ask Mister Jordan, did you have any further questions? Okay, so I have a few questions.
Question that wasn't answered and that is. Why rezone to ask for a conditional use in the um the current zoning? This use is not allowed, permitted or conditional. And the purpose of the current zoning, and this is directly from our land development code. The G C district is intended for large undeveloped or sparsely developed areas that can support. Residential um. Without extensive in- infrastructure improvements and also is used. To place land in a holding pattern until a specific request is presented that is consistent with the future land use plan.
Thank you for that. So with that noted, I do have a few questions for the applicant. Um, we're talking about uh Babcock, we're talking about Malabar. This specific section of Babcock, is this considered a state road or a county road?
It's a state road.
Hence the references to speaking to F dot and then um. Malabar County. State as well in this particular area, so both uh parts that you're gonna interface with, less the alley, uh are state roads. And while we're talking about it, what would the alley be considered?
Uh, that would be pri- that would be um. I believe that would be considered a public right of way, but um. Yeah, that would be considered public right of way since it's used by multiple users and I don't see any easements or anything on the survey, so that would be.
If you could just to the microphone.
Oh, sorry, um I was not able to find any easements or any such on the alleyway and it's um for multiple users, so it's it would be public right of way.
Understand. And as a follow-up question, um. The surrounding areas, the businesses we've heard from this evening and and immediately in this corner of the intersection, because I've heard. The attorney share with us that the opposite corners of the intersection are community commercial. These businesses that come before us, the land that they sit on in the surrounding area in just this, what would be the southeast corner. What are those zoned for?
So directly behind the property to the south, it is um commercial. General commercial and then the properties that use is commercial as well.
Understood. I thank you for that. That's the extent of my questions. I've checked with everybody, there's no further questions. Um, before I do ask for a motion, I would just wanna share with my fellow board members. That based upon um, if nothing else, that last answer alone, I do find that changing from general commercial to community commercial. Is incompatible with the immediate surrounding area. Um, and I feel that way because these two very wide state roads. Separate the other three corners and completely change the nature of what the other three corners are. We as residents of the city are very familiar with what sits on those other three corners. Um, we are familiar with the racetrack and how they've been able to mitigate flow and what have you. We're familiar with the businesses that have been there for a very long time on the northwest corner, such as Starps Automotive and Twisty Cone and. And things of a com- community commercial nature. Uh, we're familiar with with the things that have come in that plaza and the fact that there's a bank there and what have you. Uh on the southwest corner. So far as the southeast corner and everything that continues south and east, if you include. Uh, whether it's Canova Street or if you go as far as. Any of these areas, this is a commercial um portion of our city, it is not a community commercial uh portion of our city. And therefore I would not support this item. Um, but that said, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and I'm gonna ask the board for a motion.
Um, may I, may I propose? A possible solution before we call for a vote.
Absolutely, Mister McLeod, what do you have?
I think. We should have listened carefully to what council said. This particular case. Is strictly to determine the use. The second part is where all the concerns would have been raised. The city has reported to us that the application meets the requirements for the change in zoning. And I think the arguments that we've heard do not impact on the city's conclusion. That would be for the next case. So I think we need to be clear on what we're voting on.
I appreciate that, Mister McLeod. I appreciate you sharing your sentiment. I um, I in in no intention to rebut, but just to continue the conversation. I'm putting my blinders on, it's not a gas station. It's a matter of that is a commercial, a general commercial area. Um, if you look at the businesses that are there, whether it's the gentleman who has a uh car repair facility and customization facility, whether you look at the the lawnmower shop. Whether you look at the um multiple automotive natured facilities that are in that area of town. That corner and everything south and east of it is a commercial corridor uh and corner of our city. Um, and that's that's just matter of fact, I I'm not talking about a gas station. Um, so that said, does anybody have any further comments or inquiries or emotion?
I'll make a motion to deny Z twenty-four zero 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 two.
Do I hear second? That motion fails for a lack of second. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the request. In Z twenty-four zero 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 two. For the change from G C to C C.
Do I hear a second? I'm gonna be a little direct, board members, you gotta do something here. You either recommend approval or you recommend denial. As the chair, I'm just asking your fancy. I suppose. So that motion fails for a second. We're still here, we're still looking for a motion.
There there had, we have to take an action, you can't punt on this.
Exactly.
And has to be made and then a motion approver denied, cannot then.
So I'll ask as matter of. As matter of order, Mister Attorney, am I able to second a a motion as the chair?
You would have to pass the gavel.
To make or second.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna sit right here in my place of gavel and I'm gonna ask you guys, what do you wanna do?
I don't know who is, who is the acting vice chair with our vice chair not present.
He's absent today.
It's okay, I'm not passing the gavel.
Okay. Well.
Yeah, we're a clean slate. We have no active motion on the floor, but we really need one.
For on the record, if uh I would, I would advise somebody bring a motion forward if the uh. Whichever one of the two, either uh initial motion, who made the motion can reset the motion at this time for second.
Okay, so we most recently heard from Mister McLeod, so Mister Borma? Perhaps?
Okay, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Sure, Mister Borma. Let's make a motion and then we'll have a discussion if necessary. You're more than welcome to make a motion if you'd like, sir.
I'll stick with my motion then, denial.
Okay, so if you could just state it as if you hadn't earlier.
Yeah, I um make a motion to deny Z twenty-four zero 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 two.
Okay, so now we have a motion by Mister Borma and it's been seconded by Mrs. Jordan. To recommend for denial case Z twenty-four dash zero 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 two. Forgive me for presuming, but I'm gonna say there's no further discussion and I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Of deny, in favor of.
Of your motion, sir, of denial.
Okay, yeah, aye.
Okay, all opposed. Okay, so for formality sake, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Carol. Roll call vote, please.
I. My motion was for aye, yes.
Mister McLeod?
Me.
Mister Ol- Olsheski?
Aye.
Miss Jordan?
Aye.
Mister Warner?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion to recommend for denial passes four to one. Move on to the next case. That next case is case C U twenty-four dash zero 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 six. I'll defer to Miss Jefferson.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening. Case Z twenty-four zero zero.
Miss Jefferson, before we begin, because the motion, the well, there is a recommendation, well, no, there. Let me refer, so. There's a recommendation to deny the rezoning, which will go that recognition will go forth to city council. At this point, the applicant has the option whether you want to proceed forward with a conditional use. Um, request, or do you wanna withdraw it and then address the issue of of rezoning? Okay, right, so this be, so we'll proceed forward with this. With a recum- with you, whatever your recommendation is based on the evidence presented to go forward to city council.
So we will proceed with new business number two. Thank you, sir. Miss Jefferson.
Outstanding. So the applicant who you've met, uh Royal Wash P S L L L C. Is requesting conditional use approval to allow retail automotive fuel sales and convenience store. At the intersection of Babcock and Malabar Road on the southeast corner. Again, the site consists of about one point one five acres. The applicant did provide a conceptual plan, which is in your backup, proposing a ninety-five hundred or so square foot. Seven eleven convenience store along with a gas station. The conditional use is reviewed using two sections of our code. We have first just the general. Uh, conditional use requirements that are answered in the latter half of the report. The first half that I'm going to cover speaks specifically to. The use of a convenience store gas station and the criteria in the zoning district of community commercial. With regard to gas station convenience stores in that district as a conditional use. So there's criteria, uh specific requirements that must be provided by this use. As a conditional permitted use. And that's from section one eighty-five, zero four three, D three, items A through G. And in general, these items address things such as the location. And the capacity of the storage tanks, talks about the access. Egress and ingress to the site, talks about the. Uh, location of the site and our code limits. Uh, intersections like this to two fuel stations. So this would be the second fuel station at this intersection. And that would be permitted. In addition, it talks about the street frontage for uh this type of use. And looking at the conceptual plan, the street frontage was met. The applicant did provide a traffic study, which I mentioned in the staff report. And it suggested that they would remove one of the two entrances that currently exist on Malabar Road. We have some photos of the site. They weren't moved, but uh looking at the aerial, there's right now two separate entrances onto the site. And they are proposing in their traffic study to remove that west entrance. That would be eliminated. The criteria also looks at the fuel pumps, like I said, the storage of the tanks and. Uh, we we can't necessarily determine the capacity of the storage except at site plan approval, but they would be held. Uh, to those standards. It also looks at whether or not the location of the equipment. Is closer than a thousand feet from any public supply well. And it also provides for distance to residential uses and uh the proposed. Or conceptual sketch that was provided indicated that these conditions could be met. And once we get past uh that part of the code, then we also look at just the general. Regulations for conditional uses as a whole. And those items are A through H in our code, section one eighty-five point zero eight seven. And so with this part of the request, it talks about the signage and the lighting for the signage. They would be held to, of course, our, you know, uh presenting us with a photometric plan to make sure that there's no. Um, spread of the light onto other surrounding properties. It talks about the yards and open spaces being adequate to serve the proposed development. And based on the sketch that was provided, they appear to be meeting all setbacks. And uh staff did make note in the staff report of a concern regarding the alley access. For garbage pickup as well as delivery of the fuel. Uh, the stinks, the tanks are all near that area, so uh staff did make mention of that. And stated that those issues would need to be worked out through site plan approval. And perhaps a reconfiguration of the site might be necessary. But with the conceptual that was provided. It does appear to meet all required setbacks from our code. But with the conceptual that was provided, it does appear to meet all required setbacks from our code. So what staff ultimately ended up suggesting was to recommend the application with conditions and those conditions included the addition of five foot sidewalks. Right now, there are four foot wide sidewalks. Uh, the applicant because they have not submitted a site plan application would be subject to our new land development code, which requires five foot sidewalks on an arterial like this. However, we're aware that four foot sidewalks exist along the entirety of that block and so there might be something that we'd have to work out so that um, as the block develops, the five foot sidewalks would be put in. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Um, that we would need to, another condition resolving the potential access conflicts during site plan review on the southeast corner. Again, the driveway that's been mentioned in the alley near the sanitation and the storage tanks. And also the administrative site plan review will be subject to the new land development code. And that's just for, for, just to be stated clearly. Uh, the conditional use shall commence within two years of the date of which it's granted, if it's granted. And this is taken directly from our land development code. Again, just wanting to note the process. This case could not, will not be heard by the city council unless and until the rezoning is approved. Uh, with that, I will take any questions that you may have for staff.
Thank you, ma'am. Board members, having heard from staff, are there any questions before we hear from the applicant? Seeing none. For the record, we have no letters in the file on this particular case. Will the applicant or their representative please approach the microphone and make your presentation?
Alright, so again, thank you, Ms. Jefferson, for your work on this and reviewing everything that we've submitted. So again, if this is community commercial, this would be a conditional use. So um, as noted in the staff report, this would be a permitted conditional use. Retail automotive fuel sales establishments are to be located on arterial roadways, so Babcock and Malabar, those are both arterial roadways. No more than two corner lots at any intersection shall be used for retail gasoline or automotive fuse, fuel sales. As noted, there's a racetrack across the street. There are no other gas stations in that intersection other than the racetrack, so this would be the second. So again, this would be permissive as a conditional use. Is the site large enough? Yes, the site is large enough to accommodate this. The Palm Bay Utility Department has confirmed that the proposed location for the pump storage tanks and other equipments meets the standard of being far enough away from wells or other water sources. Furthermore, the staff ru- report indicates that we will need to go through the administrative site plan review to ensure that we're gonna be compliant, as noted with the sidewalks, as noted with the signage. Again, this staff has been working on those matters since we got the report last week. To the concern regarding uh, fuel delivery and waste pickup that is noted on item A of the staff report, I have representatives here um, from uh, the seven eleven and seven eleven is a vertically integrated operation, so they can control when the fuel will be delivered to the site. And again, we can work on this during site planning to ensure that the alleyway is not blocked by anyone's trap, uh, trucks. Next, are we providing adequate parking? Absolutely. Our conceptual plan shows twenty eight spaces. There's um, a minimum right now of twenty parking spaces that we would need, but we're exceeding the parking requirement. Can we provide adequate utilities? Absolutely. It's noted in the staff report. Will there be adequate buffering? The staff report notes that our conceptual plan does give that as well. The signs, again, um, that would be something that would be reviewed during site planning and obviously we want to ensure that we're complying with code. Is it meeting setback requirements? Yes, our conceptual plans meeting the setback requirements as set forth in the staff report. As to the conditions um, that were noted, um, many of these are, again, best addressed during site planning. Accordingly, we would ask that the conditional use, if this property is rezoned to community commercial, be allowed.
Thank you, sir. And I'll open the floor, the floor for public comments. Before I do, wanna reiterate to my fellow board members and the members of the public that as we've heard at the conclusion of the last case and at the beginning of this case, we're looking at this case specifically on its own, stand alone, and we are going to live in the hypothetical world that the use is now community commercial. We are going to consider if it is in community commercial, then should this conditional use be granted? So that being said, I'd like to ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Sir?
Brian Vale, twenty seven hundred Smith Lane, Malabar. Um, I've been a business, business owner in that corner for thirty one years. And I've seen the alleyway and the traffic that is currently on that alleyway is at times very dangerous. We own our businesses, there's many other businesses here that we back our vehicles out. Um, we pull them in at night and we pull them out in the morning to, to move them and there are cars cutting through. And I feel with the C C zone, zoning, that is a much higher traffic count allowable traffic count zoning than what we currently have with the C G. C G is typically, they come, they spend, you know, twenty, thirty minutes, it's, you know, they're not in and out traffic, it's not a gas station. C G, they're there for a while. On C C, they come in, get what they need and they're gone. And I see the writing on the wall where they're gonna come out the back instead of trying to fight their way back on the Malabar Road where the race to get merged in and the U-turn, it's, it's, it's ridiculous. I watch it all the time and I'm sure the rest of the people on this corner do. It's very unsafe, so they're gonna say, oh, I'm not gonna try and get out there, I'm gonna go out the alley. So I feel certain that if they are permitted alley access, that that will greatly increase traffic down the alley, which compromises our safety. Again, we load trucks, we have wreckers, there's construction companies, they unload their suppliers, they reload their trucks and tools. And as it stands now, you gotta watch what you're doing, but buddy, if this thing goes through, it's gonna be very dangerous for the businesses that are there. I feel much like other people that C G is conducive for this corner. Whereas C C, the traffic count is not conducive for this corner. So, that's all I have.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Moreover, thank you for being a small business owner and contributing to our community and thank you to all the business owners we've heard tonight. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this particular item? Oh, I think we have a race on our hands. Someone's gotta yield. Thank you, gentlemen, for working that out.
Seventeen twenty five Canova Street. Um, pretty much what Brian had to say, I don't need to repeat myself, you guys already heard me already. Uh, but one of my other concerns that just was brought up was, uh, I'm on well water and I'm directly across the street. I don't know if that affects me or doesn't affect me, but it is a concern of mine. Um, the other thing is that business, that building at one time was just an old woman with a beach shop, there's a barber in there, a pawn shop, not a lot of traffic. You know, they come in and out of the alleyway, it didn't bother us one bit. But, and they're saying that they're gonna use that for just their pump trucks or their sanitation, but we know it's gonna be more than that. And that's just the biggest, our biggest concern is the traffic on that road. So, thanks.
Thank you, sir. One shot, sir, sorry.
Butcher Rand, two nineteen Trenton Avenue. Um, speaking as a citizen, not a business owner. I go through that intersection probably four to twenty times a week with a volunteer job that I do. It's a hazardous intersection as it is now with trying to make a left turn coming out of Canova. Getting back on Babcock, almost impossible to do. Canova's the street one over from the alleyway. If you're at that alleyway trying to get out, you've only got about maybe a hundred yards to get to Babcock to make the right turn. And with all the courtesy drivers that we have here in the state of Florida, you can always get out, it's not a problem. The other thing, if approved, the alleyway, if they start using the alleyway as a entrance and exit, are they gonna make a left to come back out to Babcock? Are they gonna go right to go down? And the name of that next street, I think, is Enterprise. Yeah, Enterprise. Trying to get out of that street is a challenge. Because now, all the two lane traffic is narrowed down, I mean, all the three lane is narrowed down to two. And you got all the folks coming from the east side going west and you got the people going from the west to the east. And it's, it's, that's another one, it's because of the nice drivers that we have here, they'll let you out in a heartbeat, not a problem. You don't have to sit there three to five minutes to get out. So my concern is the increase in traffic at that intersection. Uh, and I just, I just don't think it's a safe thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Sir?
Bill Batten, five eighty six Ocean Spray Street Southwest. Very similar statements to what's already been said, but I add when an individual comes out, if they come out onto the alleyway, they're saying, because people are gonna try to find the shortest route instead of having to contend with the traffic that's on Malabar or Babcock. They can, they'll wanna get out onto that alley and go down, especially if they're the individuals that want to go south coming out of that gas station. It's easy to get in going north, but if you're an individual, if you ever wanna go south, how do you go south coming out of that? Either gotta get onto Malabar and make the U-turn? Which is very, very complicated, especially at the area, because that's the conversion point to make that U-turn is the conversion point when you go from two lanes into one lane. So that, that's gonna be a problem if you wanna be the individual going south, you have to make a U-turn. And then the other individual say, well, I don't wanna get out there and have to make that U-turn on Malabar. I'm gonna use the back, the back roads, use the alleyway over to the next road, take the next road and go down five blocks. And that's what it's gonna be, five blocks in order to cut through the next connecting road that comes out onto onto Babcock and maybe get across there. It, the whole inner thing for massive, lot of traffic going in and out is gonna be a problem. And the other area, area I'd like to bring up was land development code. We just passed the new land development code. And in the new land development code, it states commercial areas with a five foot sidewalk, which was brought up. That's what the land development code says now, so now we're talking about, well, maybe we can modify it back to the four feet. Then if that was the case, why did we just pass the new land development code if it's let's start looking at how we can modify it to give less for the development. The five foot sidewalk is gonna create a problem because they want that extra foot in order to put in tanks in the size of their building. Well, maybe they need to analyze what they're trying to do and those are all reasons not to approve it for the gas station, because there's other things that don't have to meet the same criteria for the gas tanks and for all the other storages in the site. So my recommendation is you disprove it, you do not approve the gas station uh, conditional use. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Thank you. My name is Chris Thomas. I uh, own the building at one 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 Enterprise, which was talked about just a minute ago. And I apologize, I think I led to some of that confusion between the zoning and the, the uh, conditional. So here, we're discussing specifically the conditional use of this property as a gas station. And it was mentioned that they meet certain requirements, they've done the, the traffic studies. But if you look at the, the submitted traffic study that they've provided, it does not take into consideration the alleyway whatsoever. They're specifically measuring to see can Malabar Road and can Babcock handle additional traffic? I would hope so, they're, they're big roads. It doesn't take those other aspects uh, into account. It also clearly states that two of the three outlets are directly into that alleyway. Nothing about the traffic studies, nothing that has been, that they're evaluating is going to take a look at that. It is specifically the responsibility here of this council to take and look at this and understand this situation specifically for Palm Bay and specifically for business owners like me. So it's very important that you take that consideration and deny this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing none. Alright, so, does the applicant wish to respond to any of these comments or inquiries?
So if we go to page six of uh, Ms. Jefferson's report, which uh, recommends approving the conditional use, item G is uh, considers whether the proposed use will not constitute a nuisance or hazard because of the number of persons who attend or use the facility or because of the vehicular movement, noise, fume generation, or type of physical activity. So, when she was writing her report, she's considering these items which are being raised today and yet still recommending approval for the conditional use. Um, again, there's been a traffic study conducted um, regarding the trip counts on this. Um, and it would be compatible with the existing uses around this intersection. And again, currently, this is a vacant um, piece of property. Um, and so if we're considering small businesses, uh, then think about my client, he's a small business owner. He's a developer, but he's a small business owner. So, this would be a productive use of it in furtherance of that public policy uh, that you had mentioned. So, um, again, we would ask for approval of the conditional use, provided that this was rezoned to community commercial.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions for the applicant from the board? I'll jump right in. I'll ask you, sir, but I, I do, I would like to hear from your client now. You, you told me earlier that you, you told us earlier that you have the end users here as well, right? So do you have the developer and the end user? Or just the end user?
Yep, we have both.
Okay, cool. So overall, my question is, is in seeking to understand the feasibility studies that have went into understanding that this is a prime location for a gas station. And I ask that premised on the fact of being resident of the city and knowing how many gas stations are on eastbound Malabar Road in the immediate vicinity of here and knowing that given the traffic limitations that this intersection gives you, that you're reducing your population of potential customers down to folks that wanna go eastbound on Malabar, pass Babcock, which I'll share with you as a lifetime resident of the city is relatively limited compared to the traffic that travels Babcock and the tra- traffic that travels Malabar Road. Once you get past Babcock, you head towards more of a rural area. The one gentleman, a business owner, shared that he's in Malabar, he's in the same complex, but he crosses into that Malabar and the town of Malabar, not the city, but the town. Uh, much simpler living there in little old Malabar. And even though they're developing and then things are changing, um, I see this as quite limiting factor, so I'd just like to understand how you reached the conclusion that this is feasible and will bring you return on investment, let alone our community.
So, I'm sorry, there was a lot in there.
Sure.
That I'm gonna need to unpack.
Absolutely.
So, your question is, why should we put a gas station there?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, well, um, yeah, gentlemen, if you, either of y'all wanna come up? So again, um, going back to earlier when we were uh, speaking, the initial plan here was, as noted, to put a car wash there, but that text amendment was denied and so we needed to pivot, so.
Hi, Armon Currie, and I'm with PMG. Um, don't know if you need my address or anything, but um, uh, the reason why we're looking over here, our business is all about pass by traffic. So we're not looking at the neighborhood or anything, we're looking at the existing traffic patterns and so forth, going past the site and trying to capture what's there. People are, normally don't see a gas station or a seven eleven, say, oh, let me go over there. There's plenty of them all over, all over the place. So, you're just trying to get pass by traffic, you're really not adding new traffic to the area. I E, racetrack went across the street, same type of thing, they got the same traffic patterns pretty much, they probably got it better than on our side, but that's what we're looking at. Um, as for the conditions of the property and so forth, right now, you know, we were talking about why this corner, because it was, I think you had mentioned there's other gas stations in the area. Well, the other two just west of us on the same side of the road, there's maybe three if you count another one, but let's say two. Um, they're mid-block. They actually create an unsafe condition, because people are driving forty, fifty, hopefully. They're mid-block. They actually create an unsafe condition, because people are driving forty, fifty, hopefully thirty in that area. That area, but all of a sudden, they're stopping mid-block. With this site, they got a red light, they got a light over there. So they're slowing down already to make the right turn in off of Malabar. We are eliminating one curb cut on Malabar, which FDOT wanted from us. Trust me, I would have loved to have two, three curb cuts. Understand, right? We have no curb cut on Babcock. There's none existing today. We're using, utilizing existing what's there. As for the alleyway, there's three there right now. We're going down to two. Really, one is used just for our tanker truck for egress twice a week, maybe three times a week, which we could control because we handle our own distribution of a gas leak. So that's the reason why we're looking at this particular site. It's all about the pass-by traffic. And as you know, it is a busy intersection, and therefore, there's a lot of pass-by traffic. So I just need to get a capture rate of four to five percent of that pass-by traffic that's existing, and that's what I'm looking at to have a viable business. I'm not looking to spend five and a half million dollars on this project to have a non-viable business.
Heard loud and clear, and I appreciate your articulate answer, sir. And it's my goal as, as a servant on this board to remain as objective as possible, certainly in quasi-judicial proceedings. And I really wanna hone in, and I, I want to see the case that you're making in your building. The mental blocks that I'm having is I can't get past my personal knowledge of that intersection. And I can't get past my personal knowledge of the traffic flow of that intersection. In my humble opinion, and I don't know what your studies have shown, but I'm asking what your studies might have shown, a northbound on Babcock, right, therefore eastbound turn on Malabar. And then you're gonna turn right and you're gonna head east towards US one on Malabar.
Okay.
That is one traffic scenario that's gonna get someone to pass your business, because they can't get there off of Babcock, right? And they can only get there if they turn onto Malabar. Or the folks that are coming from the west side of Malabar and are crossing over Babcock and continuing on down Malabar. And it's my assertion, my understanding, that those are the two least likely groups of traffic interacting with that intersection. The vast majority of the traffic, in my humble opinion, is heading north or south on Babcock or west on Malabar.
Okay.
And so I can't see the feasibility that you'll get the pass-by traffic. Now, I'll be honest with you. I can't see the feasibility that there's two Sunoco stations within stone's throw of each other. I can't see the feasibility that beyond ninety-five, there's yet another Sunoco station. I don't get that either. But I really, really don't get why you would come and spend your millions and your investors' millions to add yet a fourth in this continuous strip of traffic.
So, if you want me to respond, humbly, I do. That's why we're here. It's not my investors, it's me. Okay, so my company and so forth. And I, I don't know, we have successful businesses in Florida. We're in Orlando, we're in West Palm Beach, we're in Fort Myers, we're in Sebastian, we're in Vero Beach, soon to be Hialeah, and so forth. So we're all over Florida. It's not, you know, get, I'm not here. I'm not today a business owner here. Hopefully, I will be. Now, we pay taxes to you, to Palm Bay, but we do. So, and we're, hate to say it, and I defer, we have eighteen hundred gas stations along the east coast. We're obviously doing something right. So I would say, in that respect, defer to me. If it's unsuccessful, right? You got a brand-new building there that's empty, as opposed to what you got there right now, that's empty, that could be reopened at any time as X and create all this traffic with two curb cuts on Malabar, three curb cuts on the alleyway, and so forth. So everybody's acting as if everything's closed there. Oh, there was a pawn shop and so forth and so on. That's great, but tomorrow may not be. Because it's not gonna stay empty, whether it's me or somebody else. You know, our property owner bought that property. They're gonna put something in there. They're not gonna spend X on it and just leave it alone. So I defer to that part of the equation.
And I thank you for that. My, my quick follow-up to that is, are you the exact same party that proposed the car wash on that corner and thought it was a good idea?
I am not.
Okay, I understand.
I'm the end user. I'm not the property owner.
Understood. Okay.
I'm the end user.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, and that is a direct association with seven eleven. The seven eleven, you talk about this vertical integration your attorney does. It's a build and facilitate.
I do not work for seven eleven.
Gotcha.
It's more of a, it's a franchise.
Like a licensee type of thing. Understood.
It's a franchise. You know, I could put anything I want over there. We, there's a mobile gas station with a seven eleven, Circle K, whatever it may be.
Right.
I'm the operator, I'm the owner-operator, but I'm not part of the corporate seven eleven.
Right.
Or ExxonMobil, Shell, or whoever it may be.
Understood. Well, I congratulate you on your successes in the industry, and I really do genuinely appreciate your, your interest in coming to our community. I really do. Is there any further questions for the applicant of the board, especially now that we have the, the gentleman here who is the proprietor?
If I may, just to get a little handle on this, this is an application for conditional use approval. The law in the state of Florida is, has been fairly established by the Supreme Court of the state of Florida. Proper standards for conditional use approval have to be objective and provided in the code. The land development code provides, the enumerated standards are listed in the staff report. Right off the top of my head, I forget how many they are. Thereby, therefore, any decision that is based, that is, any decision on this application must be based on the nine or ten, don't hold me on the number, criteria provided in the code. While you may, as a board, gather information, subject matters such as economic feasibility, whether or not this is a proper business on this site, are outside of the scope of the objective standards laid out in the land development code. Decisions that are outside of the scope of the code, or decisions made which may be open to interpretation, open to discretion on the part of a board, that may lead to subjective results, are unconstitutional in the state of Florida. And a decision on a conditional use approval that falls, that is based on evidence outside of the nine enumerated standards in the land development code is going to be subject to appeal and remand back to this council for, for falling outside of the scope as what is permissible under law, under established Florida law. So I would be remiss if it, if I did not counsel this board that your scope of review is limited to the nine objective standards that are presented in the land development code that an applicant must present and must prove. If there is, if you believe that the, that the applicant's request is not based on competent substantial evidence on the nine objective standards in the code, then it is your right to deny the application. However, decisions outside of that scope could potentially subject that decision to overturn, overturning by the courts. Now, I'm not telling you how to vote. If you decide to, to decide to vote how you wish and the matter is remand, is sent to the courts, I, the city attorney's office must defend the city and must defend the action. But I would be remiss if I didn't advise you that this is a matter that has been decided by the state courts and that the scope of review is limited. And is limited to the objective standards presented in the land development code. Did the app, does the applicant meet those standards? And then you must go through those nine that are, that are presented in the staff report. Anything outside of that opens up basically subjective interpretations. And the courts have said that review boards do not have the authority and do not have the scope to go beyond that, because if, if it opens a matter to subjective interpretation, it's unconstitutional. So, so I'm just reminding you that, and however you're moving forward and basing your decision, please keep in mind that your decision must be based on the factors presented and the standards that the applicant must present that are listed and enumerated clearly in the land development code.
I greatly appreciate that, counsel, sir. I truly do. And I, I just do wanna share that as far as my inquiries go, through prior conversations with our city attorney on how to handle quasi-judicial proceedings, I absolutely refuse to meet with anybody before a quasi-judicial proceeding. I've had many requests to do so, and I will not even respond to those requests, so don't send them. And I've counseled with the city attorney to understand further if I have questions that I need to get past to even be able to look at the thing. I, was shared with me that it's my burden to say, hey, these things are a block to me and to give the applicant the opportunity to rein me in and to, and to share with me their viewpoint and so on and so forth. So I personally have greatly benefited from this dialogue. I do not intend by any means to waste anybody's time by, by having it or to deviate from my desire to be objective. But, you know, I can't serve in a way of, it's, it's rubber stamp or nothing. The, the, the public is due dialogue to fully comprehend what's going on here with these applications. And so, again, I'm going to take your counsel to heart, and I'm going to act accordingly. But I am certainly going to voice where I'm at with things, always in the open, in the sunshine, which is my only opportunity to share these thoughts with my counsel, with my staff, and with my fellow board members, and of course, the public. If I were to do so in any other environment, two parties or more together, I would be violating the sunshine law, which is something that I will never do. So I feel remiss if I don't share that with not only you, but everyone that might potentially be listening to this meeting. I'm a wide-open book, and I always will be.
Counsel, I just wanna say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna say thank you for that guidance. That is what I was alluding to on our first vote. We need to look carefully at what the staff says about the legal requirements of the application.
So, that being said, does anyone have any further questions for the applicant, or do we ready to kinda move into the motion? Seeing no further questions? Thank you, folks. So, board, we've heard all the evidence. Do we have a motion?
We do have a question, though. Yes, since, since, um, the, the first one was denied. Do we, can, can we approve the conditional uses here for the, for the, for the, because, because I think the part that was denied probably more than anything was the, the move from the, from the general commercial district to the commercial, to the, to the community commercial district.
Not to jump in on you, Mr. Warner, but let me just reiterate very clearly. We're focusing on this case as if it was already community commercial. Would we approve that conditional use? So the, the previous case has absolutely no bearing on how are we gonna recommend this case? We're gonna live in the hypothetical world that it is community commercial. Do we recommend a conditional use for the sale of automotive fuel?
To answer the, the commission members, uh, answer question, yes, you may move to recommend. Again, you're a recommending body, so you're making a recommendation to the city council for the city council to ultimately make the final decision. It would be awkward that you're recommending for approval for a conditional use on a property whose zoning you have recommended denial. Now, you do have a second option. The maker of the motion to recommend denial can bring the matter, because we're at the same meeting. That, that, that member, or any member of the winning side of that prior motion can bring the matter back for reconsideration. So to vote, and then you want, if you want to reconsider the, the rezoning application and then your recommendation, that is something that is available to you. But that motion will have to be made by either the motion maker or one of the members that voted. Basically, there's four of you who can bring that matter back for, for reconsideration, if you want to do that. If you elect to decide to recommend approval of the conditional use and the recommendation to deny the zoning change remain, those two will go up to the city council. The city council will then have to address the issue that we've got conflicting recommendations on a matter, and they may, they may decide to move forward on the zoning and disregard your recommendation. Or they may disregard your recommendation on the zoning change, but then disregard your recommendation or approval on the conditional use. That's gonna be the prerogative of the, of the city council. So those are the options that are, that I can present to you here in order to decide how you want to proceed forward.
Thank you, counsel. So do I hear a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the request for our conditional use
Mr. McLeod, I'll ask you to speak on the mic, but for the, for the audience and for the rest of the board, Mr. McLeod just made a motion to recommend for approval case CU twenty-four dash zero 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 six. Is there a second to Mr. McLeod's motion to recommend this case for approval, for the conditional use?
And I'd just like to add, with the conditions recommended by staff.
With the conditions recommended by staff. Thank you, sir. Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, that motion fails due to a lack of second. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to deny CU twenty-four zero 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 six.
Okay, so Mrs. Jordan has made this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Mrs. Jordan has made a motion, Mr. Borman has seconded it, to recommend to city council the denial of case CU two-four dash zero 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 six. Seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, that motion passes three to two. And we're on to our next case. Sorry, I didn't queue it up. And that is case CU twenty-three dash zero 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 one five, and I'll defer to Ms. Hagler.
All right. Good evening. Kim Hagler, senior planner. The next case is number CU twenty-three dash zero 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 fifteen. The applicant, Richard Prybel, and Joyce Locken Prybel, represented by Stephen Contagaro. They're all present this evening. The location of this site is north of and adjacent to Port Malabar Boulevard northeast, specifically at eighteen oh three Port Malabar Boulevard northeast. Uh, the future land use, this is a unique site. It's a ten-acre site that actually has uh, future land use of conservation, public semi-public, and low-density residential. It also has three zonings, a floodway conservation district, institutional use, and an RS-two single-family residential. The applicant's requesting a conditional use to allow the construction of a dock within the floodway conservation district in accordance with section one eight five zero four eight D three of the Palm Bay Code of Ordances. And an approximately quarter acre area of their ten-acre property in the southwest corner is zoned for single-family residential and is developed as the applicant's primary residence. The conditional use request is specifically to allow for the installation of a dock within a portion of the parcel that is in the floodway conservation zoning district. Upon receiving conditional use approval, the applicant will be required to apply for a dock, a dock permit with the city. Through the administrative permit review process, staff will ensure compliance with all applicable codes regarding dock design and setbacks. Specifically, the requirements of section one seventy point one four one and one seventy point one four two. Uh, they have extensive details that serve to further ensure that these structures are designed with minimal impact on the floodway and surrounding natural area. Uh, the applicant will also be required to submit a valid Army Corps of Engineers permit, dock permit, and a formal wetland delineation for the entire parcel. And CU twenty-four fifteen is recommended for approval. This is a slide sketch, it's not showing up great on the TV. But it shows that it's actually just adjacent to an FDOT access easement. And on the eastern edge of the property, right on Turkey Lake, Turkey Creek. And the next slide will show exact location of it there where the green star is. Any questions?
Any question? Having heard the staff report, is there any questions for the staff before we hear from the applicant? Seeing none? Mr. Warner?
Yes, sir. I must have missed it in here, but the, is, is it gonna be a dock and a ramp, or just the ramp?
Dock.
So just a dock? And the, the, the dock is going to And the, the, the dock is going to be, so what, so what, what exactly is the conditional use for the dock?
To put a dock in a floodway conservation area.
To put it in that area?
Correct.
And it's only gonna be a dock?
Correct, just an accessory structure, a dock. Our code actually has very uh detailed criteria for docks to prevent. Intrusion in the waterway to keep it open and to prevent um affecting the natural areas.
Right. I guess one of the reasons why I'm asking the question is because of the conditional use. Um, and the dock is built. I mean, so it's, it's gonna be a private dock and it's not, or, or it's not gonna be like a dock where it's gonna be. Uh, where you can host parties or, or, or.
There are a lot of restrictions to size for residential docks, so. No, it's uh, I, I know the specifics, but it's, it's limited in size. It won't be, it's not possible.
Thank you.
I have a question. Chair, Mister McLeod, please.
With respect to size and usage, does this dock meet all the criteria in that particular conservation area?
I'm, I apologize.
This dock that is proposed. Based upon size and location, does it meet the criteria?
Yes.
For that structure in the, in that conservation area?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. I do have one question for you. If we could bring up the map that shows the uh property lines of this applicant. My inquiry is, is it um, is the. Top right portion, I'm sorry, I don't have my center direction here. Oh, I guess that's dead north. So is the northeast corner um kind of. Adjacent to Sun Swept Road way up there, north, northeast. Up, right? That little canal area, is that also floodway conservation area? Is this entire property floodway conservation area?
Yes, the green parts uh bordering that property that are not part of this parcel are actually um owned by the city, floodway conservation.
Understood, understood. But the little protrusion out is, is the, is the applicant's property, right?
No, only what's yellow hatched.
Okay, understood, understood. Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. So for the record, we do have uh one letter. Um, they uh seems to be a investigative report of sorts. Uh, in the record for this case. Um. That being said, will the applicant or their representative please approach the microphone and make your presentation?
Good evening, good evening, Mister Chair, Board, Mister Attorney, uh Steve Conseguero, on behalf of the Prybels. Uh, both of them are here and they've got um Kenya there, uh curator. So. Conditional use for this single vessel dock, it's gonna protrude about sixteen feet into the waterway. Um, the reviews that have happened so far, the United States Army Corps of Engineers are there to make sure that there's navigability. So they did that. The FDEP is there more about critters, trees and, you know, animals. So they have had their review. The St. John's River Water Management District sometimes reviews these, in this case, they've deferred to the FDPE. All of which is to say, it's in a floodway conservation parcel. Mister Prybel gets it. It's gonna flood. It's, that is its purpose. It's there to protect the community. It's there to soak up the floodwaters. While it's not flooding, he wants to have his little boat dock. So that really is the purpose of the conditional approval. And after this, you know, it still goes to the council and then it goes through the gauntlet of permitting. And I can assure you that, that they are no slouches. And so we have reviewed the staff comments and obviously we're prepared to comply. We've already seen some comments from building department. We're gonna be ready to comply with those. The CPP for this application was pretty well attended, so we addressed a lot of issues there from the community. And we may have, although they may be too shy to fill out a card, we may have some community members who are in favor. They might give you a hearty wave. I, I don't know that they're uh prepared to come up and speak. Um, and so really, a- at this point. If the board wants to hear from Mister Prybel, he's ready. I'm just the paper jockey, but he's ready to, to thank you and to support, but we ask for your approval.
Sure, thank you very much, sir, for your presentation. We'll open the floor to public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who?
So I live, if you wanna go back to the.
If you could just state your name and your address.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Rosita Cotton, eight thirteen Sadnet Circle in Palm Bay, and I'm directly across the water. From the creek there. Um, and I'm not. I, I wanna get some specifics on the dock. I am not saying that I am against it. Um, I have to say that since they have owned the property. They have done some wonderful improvements to the property. I've been very pleased with those improvements. I just want to make sure as far as with, as far as the dock goes, I know it's quite long. I know I've heard that it. It's forty feet long, twenty-four feet high, sixteen feet wide is what I understood it to be. Um. Which is, okay, I just wanna know exactly where it's gonna be and will there be lighting and so forth on it? I just would like some more questions answered. But as I said, what they have done to the property has all been very good work. I mean, they have tried to preserve and improve upon the property.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, sir?
Bill Vatten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street Southwest. Now, this is a person, individual, asking for a conditional use. To do something that in prior history. Failed to meet criteria for following the guidelines within the city of Palm Bay. Now, and as I was going through the packet, I've noticed that some of their building permits have already expired. So now we're starting another. Let's say chain of events that we now have to follow, but if we don't grant conditional use now, then we don't have to worry about that. And the reason why this is important is because of some of the things this individual did. To the floodplain prior to getting authorization. If you're looking in your packet, he had to make corrective actions. And I'm not one to say, well, you have to be punished twice. But we set the precedence of type of, type of this individual. Of the way he treats the environment now. I did look at the pictures, I. And it does look like he cleared some areas out, but prior to that, it was a little bit on the side, the things that he was trying to do, the. Trying to revamp the floodplain, trying to revamp the outflow, trying to revamp. There's a whole lot of. As I wanna say shady stuff going on. Now, does that mean we should not approve constant uh conditional use? Does it meet the criteria? Well, cause you had to make corrections, things had to be corrected by the Army Corps of Engineers and. To meet criteria for the environment protection. That's what had to happen. And they say they did. I went through the packet and I didn't find anything that said they actually met that criteria. I saw that they said they were done. But I could never find any letter that said it was actually completed. That was what I, I couldn't find in the packet. That being said. In the floodplain, when how many other piers or docks with boat lifts. Were requiring electricity and everything else going into the Turkey Creek? How many do we have on there? That Turkey Creek waterway was supposed to be one of our primary tourist attractions to this area. That's what Turkey Creek is. In fact, that's where we have all our runoff guidelines and everything else that we're currently looking at. So I'm just trying to. Be a little bit cautious. Does it meet the legal grounds for the denial? Are there still outstanding? I don't wanna say court orders to, for corrections. I'm just, just a doubting Tom and that's the way I am. I like to say let your past actions be your following actions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this request?
I'm Carol Connor. I'm at eight seven three Sadnet Circle. And I only, I'm not for or against it. I'm just. Kind of, I don't wanna see anything like um. Boats or, you know, what, what is the, I'm, I'm not quite sure of the purpose. If you're doing it for residential, but I don't understand the conditional use. Are you able to explain that further or no?
Well, what we can do, ma'am, is once we wrap everything up, we can have the applicant add some texture a- as a, as an answer to your inquiry and maybe even the staff. Give all your feedback now and then they'll respond.
To what their purpose is?
Right. Do you just share everything you have right now and then you'll get your, yeah. That's it? Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the applicant for a response to these inquiries and comments.
No, thank you to everyone for their comments. Uh, one of them had to do with some prior activity associated with the um. The, I would say the flora, right, the trees. And so what that was is Mister Prybel was removing an invasive species. Brazilian pepper. It grows a lot. I, I think in the floodway conservation parcel owned by the city, you see that it is much more tall. Because it's an invasive, it can be removed. Mister Prybel removed it by the root. It turns out that the way you remove Brazilian peppers, you cut it. And you leave a little bit of it out of the ground. FDPE came in, explained that to him. He stopped and he did the rest of it the way that it should be. Now, as a result of that, there's been natural recruitment so that it still is lush, but it isn't Brazilian pepper. Instead, you know, I think the critters and the varmints prefer what is growing there now. And so that is in response to the comments about any type of sketchy environmental activity. As to the size, it is um forty feet long. You got that correct. Mind you, that's forty feet along the shoreline. It extends only sixteen feet out into the water. The waterway is plus or minus eighty-three feet wide. And so Corps of Engineers, FDPE have taken that into account and that's why he's limited to the sixteen feet. There's still gonna be full navigability. And trying to recall the other Brazilian pepper. Um, Corps of Engineers permit, he obtained a permit prior to, the one that is in the packet right now might. Look as though it's outdated, but we've uploaded through the IMS, the renewed Corps of Engineers permit. In other words, that step, which is an important step towards navigability, it's done. It will be resolved by the time that this goes into permitting. And I guess finally, I would say too, don't doubt the, the city's ability to review. Any type of compliance issues in the permitting process. In other words, the, the reason it's a conditional use. Is if somebody has their residential property, a lot of times they can build a dock by right. They bought the property, it's on the water. They have right to take advantage of it. The reason why this is called a conditional use is because this parcel is zoned to be this floodway area. It's there to flood. I mean, during the hurricanes in twenty-three, it got hammered. In other words, the water flows there so that it doesn't flow into the. Residential properties across the way, for example. This property absorbs that and sacrifices itself to soak up the water. It's floodway conservation. The conservation part again is for the critters here. You know, turtles, rabbits, iguanas, maybe even some gators. There's a lot of critters. All of them are loved, respected. This is the Prybel's dream home. So, so he just wants to have his little dock as if it were his house. And that's why we have to go through this process. But. Um, any questions from the, from the board?
Thank you for those responses. I'll ask the board if there's any further questions for the applicant. Mister Borma.
So, on this letter that, in our packet, you have returned to compliance?
That's correct. The mulch and. It's the, the FDPE letter, right? I think we, we submitted that. Late, so with apologies, in order that you could see what the description was of what happened, right? So that you could see that it is, it had more to do with, with the process of removing this Brazilian pepper. You know, not. Any intent, right? It wasn't that the idea was to harm the environment. In fact, by Brazilian, by removing the Brazilian pepper. You make room for more Florida-friendly plants to grow in. So that was the.
So they refer to the tree debris?
Correct.
The pepper tree?
There was tree debris associated with the storms. So there was a time when there was something of a hue and cry. Because there was a bunch of activity removing trees, but that was deadfall. In other words, those trees weren't gonna do anything else. And in fact, it's a funny thing. I would have thought that they would die, deteriorate and fertilize, but it turns out you don't do that. You wanna take the deadfall out and let what is underneath breathe. And so part of the process during the storms was removing deadfall and that. The optics of that were a problem. It turns out the substance of it was not. So it was just the look of removing these trees. They were dead, they should have been removed.
In the mulch that they're referring to, that's also been.
That's out. So the other part of that was, was removing the mulch because the mulch was there, I mean essentially it was cosmetic. But again, removing the mulch now allows regular, robust, Florida-friendly. Species to grow in.
And it hasn't been done.
That's right.
Thank you, Mister Borma. Further questions for the applicant, from the board? I'll jump in and ask, sir, and, and perhaps you have to defer to your client and um, I, I'll preface it with, you heard my spiel, I'm an open book. My understanding of this property, since it has changed hands, which a reminder to everybody is it was the, the pastor's house of the Lutheran church. So it was the house towards the church, way away from the conservation land. Then, we came into the conservation land. My understanding is, is that your client himself stood on that podium, whether it was in front of our board or the city council. And talked about dreams of, of creating a venue of sort and bringing people in and, 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 and sharing our beautiful Turkey Creek with them, which I think is, is. Beautiful in nature, um, but from a practicality standpoint, I don't see it. But in tonight's proceedings, I'm hearing more of a residential and. It is residential. It's, it's a, it's a house with property and they've been merged and this is all my understanding. So I'm just looking for that ultimate clarification. Is this a, a, a place to be turned into a wedding venue? Or is this a, a, a lovely couple's dream home as you describe it?
Sure, uh, thank you for the question. And, and I'm gonna clarify there because. The parcel where the house is, is RS two, right? So thank you. That's where the house is a little gray bit. And then the parts that are hatched, the, the sort of yellow hatching is partly institutional. I wanna say the blue part with the hatching is also used to be the church's property. Mister Prybel acquired that. And then the part that is green with the yellow hatching, that's the floodway conservation. In other words, it's something of a mega parcel. All now under one legal description with three different zonings in it. To answer the question, it is intended to be his Swiss Family Robinson home to, to date myself. Uh, and that is its purpose. The, the idea, I think initially was there were some thoughts about what could be done with the property. But during a series of hearings in May of two thousand twenty-two, I believe, both through the board here and through the city council. The city council made it known that you couldn't do it. In other words, you couldn't rezone all of that residential. Without having a weird delineation between what is floodway conservation. What was he gonna do? He was ne- never gonna be able to fill in floodway conservation parcels. The FDPE would have killed him. And so it, it really is intended to be a combination of the little, I'd say the little house and the little gray square and then this really. Fun, for lack of a better term, wilderness, leading to the boat dock. So it's just like having a giant mother nature in your backyard, but that is the, the intent here is to, is to have it be the best and highest use of his dream house.
Beautiful. That being said. And, and perhaps I just don't see the topographical makeup here, but what's to prevent going up in the corner? Towards Sun Swept in the little, the little finger canal? Because I'm viewing, if you wanna house a boat there, it's cause you wanna get to the river. That is the absolute terminus. You, once you go under the bridge, you're in the sanctuary. You're not taking a, a speedboat in there. If you're gonna house a speedboat, it's to go cruise on the creek and then end up in the river. So why not go closer to the river?
Certainly, and now the. Maybe there is a question about the, where the location is. I wonder if I could get a little assist here. So you could see that, that the dock is gonna be closer to Port Malabar. Uh, yeah, yeah, the, the, there's a, what you call it, a pushpin, the. For Mister Chair, in order for you to see where the dock is. So that's where the dock is gonna be, right?
Right.
So then what is, what is the, the detail to follow up?
So then my inquiry is why not go to the polar opposite end of the property, the far north end of the property? You know, make your little cut-through trail, have your wilderness and come out closer to uh Sun Swept. So you gotta zoom out and you gotta go north. To Sun Swept. There's all those houses have docks. They live on a little tiny canal. Nope, way up. I'll get up if I have to. Stop! Nope, stop, right there.
Mister Chair, this is all jurisdictional wetlands up here.
Right.
And in order to build some kind of path or a dock up and through here would take extensive permitting and mitigation. In this area here, this is an existing DOT like easement way. Especially right here, as explained before by Ms. Hagler, and there's minimal to no wetland. Uh, impact along this pathway directly to the house. So that is why the decision was made to put it here. Does that, does that help you?
To a degree because the visual is totally inaccurate because it's lush and completely filled and that's not what the property looks like anymore. So the only reason that there's a clear path is because of all the clearing is done. It's my assertion if we found a way to clear down. It's my assertion, if we found a way to clear down to the to the southeast, why can't we find a way to clear to the northwest? And again, make it more conducive to the daily happenings of the boat. And my biggest concern is get it further away from the entrance to the sanctuary.
Yeah, and so for that, Mr. Chair, I actually have Mr. Pride.
Sure, thank you.
Cuz it gets into more of the terminal use of it and
Right.
Like him to be able to to pitch it.
Thank you. Hi, Richard Pride Bell, Rick. The um, we had a wetland delineation uh, done the moment that I purchased the property. And the area that we have the dock and it's required by Federal Department of Environmental Protection is to enter the walkway to a dock is it needs to be an upland, which this is. The area you're describing is not upland. It, you have to, it's it's all muck. I'd love to share with you the property sometime, because I really do take a lot of pleasure. We've been working very hard on trying to improve the property. Um, which that details in the the letter that I submitted for your benefit to understand what had happened. Because I know there's been a lot of disinformation about it. But um, to answer your question, as the lady had mentioned to you, it is in the upland portion. To walk it is upland, to get on the dock is upland, and it's an eighty-three foot area, which is more than sufficient from the department, the federal agencies to approve it. That wouldn't be the case with where you described. It would require, it it's it's over muck. It it's just a whole different scenario.
Okay, so just to restate, to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, is upland in relative to the water, of course, cuz you're coming downhill from the home to get to this area, but you're saying that it builds up off of the water, so you actually have like solid ground to walk on, whereas opposed to the area I'm speaking of? You don't?
Sort of kind of. The, when they do the wetland delineation, an environmentalist comes here and flags the wetland, which is the difference between the type of substrate that water tends to collect more so. The upland portion is a more solid surface and that is the clear difference that they allow building on upland. They do not allow building on wetland. To have a dock, you, is required that you enter it from an upland area. That's the only portion that is considered upland. Now, there is a possibility that one day in the future, they would allow a boardwalk or something to get over the wetland, which would be quite a distance in this case, to get to that one area you're describing.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, sir. I appreciate it.
If I may, uh, it was detailed in the um, in the staff report that following along the road there is, it's basically a berm. Think of it that way. It's raised a little bit along the road, which is just naturally when they build the road. So that's why he's following that line and oh, there's a footpath through there.
But how many feet away from the road are we gonna be for the dock? I mean, it looks like a good fifty, sixty feet from the easement. You got Port Malabar, you got this F dot thing, which if I'm not mistaken, is made out of concrete. It looks like the dock is gonna occur fifty, sixty feet away from that? I- in this conversation, I would expect that it would have to be right up against it.
If if, Mr. Chair just has a point of reference, the length of the dock, the black part, that's forty. So if you wanna use that as a, just as a, you know, in terms of half of that, looks to be, you know, twenty, maybe it's that's the dimension you're looking for.
Okay. Alright, I I appreciate all these clarifying questions. If it's, if it's not obvious by now, I just, the the entrance, the the entrance to the Turkey Creek Sanctuary is what we're talking about right now. Um, okay, is there any further questions for the applicant? Alright, well, we've heard from the public, we've asked our questions, so I'll bring it back to the board. Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the board and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
You mic, ma'am.
Motion to approve CU twenty-three zero 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 one five.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mrs. Jordan, seconded by Mr. McLeod to recommend for approval, case CU twenty-three dash zero 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 one five. Having no further discussion, I will ask for a a call of vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Mr. Warner, did you get your vote in there, bud?
Yes, sir, I did. Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, alright, and uh, sorry, I guess I gotta formally ask for a roll call, but I didn't hear your vote, so I don't know what the count is.
Mr. Borma?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Mr. Olszewski?
Nay.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Alright, so that motion passes four to one, recommended for approval. We're gonna move on to new business item number four. And before we do and before we defer, I'm so sorry, but I must ask for just a brief recess. Alrighty, if we're all set, we'll, we'll get to the point of calling this meeting back to order. Thank you very much for obliging my need for recess. And we will uh officially call this meeting back to order and take up new business item CU two-four dash zero 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 four, and I'm gonna defer to Ms. Ramos.
Good evening, uh, this project is the office and self-storage at Heritage Corners. The applicant is Ascot Palm Bay Holdings and is represented this evening by Anna Saunders from BSE Consultants. It's located at, it's located south of and adjacent to Emerson Drive Northwest in the vicinity east of St. John's Heritage Parkway and has a future land use of commercial. The existing zoning is community commercial and the parcel is approximately three point five seven acres. So the request tonight is for a conditional use to allow self-storage in the community commercial district. And I have referenced both the new and the current code. Um, and in analysis, this is really more of a history about the site and how we got here tonight. So in two thousand twenty-three, a similar request for a two-story self-storage building was submitted. And at that time, it met all the minimum requirements for self-storage as a conditional use and staff had recommended approval. On October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Board also voted six to one to recommend approval to City Council. Uh, however, on October nineteenth, the City Council then voted to deny the request with a vote of three to one. Uh, and they noted that this type of commercial development does not promote the creation of jobs. Um, so that was denied and then the applicant uh, appealed the denial on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, City Council then issued a final order upholding their decision and citing objective uh, FLU dash one point three, which seeks to uh, counteract the bedroom community conditions that cause residents to travel to neighboring cities to meet their needs for goods, services and employment. And that's a comprehensive plan objective. So this evening, the current application has included the addition of a fifteen hundred square foot office space along with the requested use for conditional use for self-storage in attempt to provide compliance with the future land use objective. Um, this change was deemed a subst- substantive change, allowing recedental of this request prior to the expe- expiration of the twelve-month timeframe, which is required by Palm Bay Code of Ordinances. Uh, the primary differences that I see in reviewing this plan, um, the building area is a little bit smaller. They have the addition of the fifteen hundred square foot office space. And um, the previous plan did look like it had a more substantial landscaping buffer um, to the south, I believe that will be, where they would be facing the residential PUD. Uh, but either way, um, the old plan and the current plan both have proposed a six-foot-high fence there. Um, so this does meet the code requirements for conditional use for self-storage in community commercial zoning and staff is again recommending approval. And I'm available for any questions and the applicant is also here.
Board members, having heard the staff, thank you very much, ma'am. Board members, having heard the staff report, are there any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Seeing none, I will ask, uh, who, who determined that the change was substantial enough to bring it forth four weeks early?
I believe that came from city manager and city attorney's offices.
Understood, and perhaps I can pre- reserve the question for the applicant, but I'll ask you, um. Why not wait four weeks, not even have that subjective decision made? Why not remain objective?
Well, the application came in earlier and we wouldn't have been able to accept it, so we're here tonight, but I've been working on this for a few weeks.
So you wouldn't have been able to accept the application until that October something deadline had had come, that would put us a few more meetings out?
More months before you would be hearing this again.
Thank you for that answer. It helps me understand much better. Thank you very much, Ms. Ramos. So, that being said, will the applicant or their representative please approach the microphone and give your presentation?
Hey, good evening. It's Anna Saunders with uh, BSE Consultants, three twelve South Harbor City Boulevard, uh, Melbourne, Florida, three two nine zero one. Just wanna say again, thank you for having us here this evening. The staff report is always is complete and really gives you a good um, overview of the project. I just wanna highlight a couple of key items. Um, as Ms. Ramos said, it was uh, approved by this board about a year ago and then it went to City Council who had some concerns and really wanted to um, have some job creation in this area. And so we went back to the drawing board. Um, I said, go back to the drawing board, that actually hired me. I wasn't the representative for the previous um, application and neither was this, the end user. So it's a new, new set of bases, new application. Um, and we met with city staff, including the city manager, uh, your city attorney Patricia Smith, and talked through uh, the items that were, would um, tick the boxes for substantial change. And the inclusion of the fifteen hundred square foot of um, office flex space was something that everybody felt comfortable with. And so we went ahead and moved forward with um, generating the construction, or the the concept plan, the landscape plan that you see in your packet, uh, and working with staff back and forth through a submittal, responding to comments, and then getting to this point this evening. Um, as you heard, again, there's fifteen hundred square feet of office flex space uh, incorporated in the project. We see that use being used by local uh, local vendors, small businesses, and think that it'll have a really a a nice impact um, in this area. Uh, from a job creation standpoint, in addition to those office spaces, there's four uh, full-time employees that would be part of the storage facility themselves. And then also, uh, a project of this size, it's three and a half acres, obviously has a landscape and maintenance uh, crew that's gonna be there on a weekly, bi-weekly basis in the summer. Um, so that employ, you know, further local, local folks here in uh, the town. Um, from a demand standpoint, I feel like someone's probably gonna ask me about that, why this, why here? Um, there isn't a storage facility within a three-square-mile radius, so there really is a a impending demand for this particular uh, project. Within the uh, circumference of this, if you will, the Lenar properties that you guys are familiar with, there's Everlands, I'll call it the east side of the road. Uh, and then the west side that isn't quite yet um, onboard. But overall, there's four thousand units that'll be coming um, this direction. The east side has fourteen hundred and sixty, if I remember uh, the math correctly. That's a lot of folks coming in, moving, relocating, uh, maybe perhaps downsizing for this first time, but not quite ready to get rid of their stuff. Uh, and so we do see this facility being utilized um, quickly and and uh, renting out very, very fast. Um, another bonus, I think, for the city is that it's a great tax base, right? So it pays the commercial taxes, but it doesn't have a tax on your uh, utility infrastructure. So it's very little traffic generator. The EMS, emergency support services are very little. The system or the the building is sprinkled, so it's, you know, even less in that respect. And the same thing with utilities. It's a very low-use um, burden on the the city system. Aesthetically, to be a good neighbor, right? It's not the self-storage facilities of yesteryear. Um, they look like really nice, modern office buildings. You've got in your packet the uh, architectural drawings that reflect that. Um, the building looks stellar, I think, right? There's no outside roll-up doors, so we meet all of those code requirements um, from that perspective. The landscape buffer that was mentioned in uh, the pre, in Ms. Promis's uh, comments, we do provide the twenty-five-foot rear buffer. Um, it is fenced, and if you don't mind, if I may approach the bench and just give you something to hand out so you can see it? So in front of you, what what's being passed out is a a current aerial from Brevard County Property Appraisers website. The red box is the project site that we're talking about right now. And directly to the south of that is the fourth phase of what's called Timbers at Everlands. That is the residential community that's currently under construction. The dimensions that you see there are the fifty-five, ninety and the forty-five feet. That represents the distance from the rear portion of those lots north to the property line. And in that particular area, there's actually a platted tract. By memory, I'm gonna tell you it's K-six on uh, Phase Four Plat. That tract is dedicated and designated as being open space, landscape uh, and drainage. So you can see in this aerial that there is existing native vegetation that's been maintained. That is reflected also in the residential construction plans, that there's a natural buffer that's being maintained throughout the course of that development. So in reality, we're gonna have a a minimum of forty-five feet plus an additional twenty-five feet that includes a wall plus landscaping on our side. Or at the maximum point, ninety feet plus that twenty-five feet. So we do feel like we're being a good neighbor from a lands, uh, a buffering perspective. Um, again, it's a quiet use. Uh, we've put on that plan our operating hours uh, so that you and residents and city staff understand when people are allowed to come and go. Our access point is off a side street, um, right there Magenta Way with a shared access going to be just to the west of it. So the purpose of that again is to help not only this parcel, but the future commercial parcel that that's left over. It's another three and a half acre piece that it'll have a shared access drive, so we don't have multiple points of access on the same Anderson Road uh, connection. And with that, I would just respectfully request your approval and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. For the record, we don't have any letters in the file. Uh, pertaining to this case, I'd like to open the Florida public comment and ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Sir?
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. I know within the city that there's sometimes a negative connotation about um, storage facilities. But I'm gonna point out one simple fact. It's a commercial business. It's one of the best succeeding businesses that we have in the city right now. They're always full, they're always in demand. Even though they don't, might not hire a lot of employees, it's a bus- it's something that is needed because they're succeeding as a business in the city of Palm Bay. That's why I think this is a, one, one of the good reasons. The other reason is the tax revenue that we get off of this is business tax revenue compared to instead of residential tax revenue, which is also at a higher rate, get more bang for our buck. It has minimum, minimal impact on our police force. For every home that we bring in, we need more police officers. But for every business we bring in, we don't have to increase the number of police officers. It does have an impact on our fire, fire demand. And as I understand, they're gonna have self-contained sprinkler systems and stuff like that to help maintain it, which is a po- a positive. Um, we're looking at the number of households that are coming in along the St. John's Heritage Parkway. Which is brought out at this point, it was four thousand new homes coming in. So they're gonna be, I'd have no idea how many you'd be able to support for storage units for that. But you can pretty well bet, just based on the way society is responding within the city of Palm Bay now, that they're filling up and being used, and we're gonna need these. But also in conjunction with that, is all the homes coming in from the county just north of everything on St. John's Heritage Parkway, that's not in the city of Palm Bay. All those new homes that are being built there still need to have this facility to their, for their Christmas ornaments. That being said, I know people look at this as a topic, we don't want more storage units, but it's something that's needed. And it is a business that generates tax revenue. So I speak in favor. Go ahead and pass this one. It sounds like a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and ask the board, uh, actually, excuse me, uh, any responses to the comments or inquiries from the applicant? And then so at that, we will ask if the board has any further questions for the applicant or staff. Mr. Borma?
I did.
Mr. Warner?
Yes, sir.
Ju- just a question on the um, on the Palm Bay office suites. Are 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 these gonna be professional suites for professionals or?
Yes, sir.
So we're, so we're anticipating that there's gonna be a lot of professionals that's gonna be moving into the area into?
Yeah, I mean, we see, we see a need for, um, especially with the community to the south, it's adult, active adult community. Um, you know, COVID, I hate bringing COVID up, right? It feels like it just never goes away, but um, COVID had created-
COVID had created quite the opportunity for working at home. And we have seen sort of a trend in that marketplace where that's. Not always the greatest, right? And if you've got an opportunity to go to work that's just up the street. Doesn't go, you don't go out on the parkway, you don't go out on Emerson, you, you stay on those internal streets, that that is a viable option. Folks like to have that sort of home away from home office and still conduct business. And then there's just other, you know, local, small, independent vendors that need an office space, but can't necessarily. Afford the, you know, the larger rent that you're getting or being required to take at other spots. Another one of the ideas that we have thrown out there is a conference room type center to support, you know, meetings and such like that that you need. And we're happy to work with the economic development team to try and, you know, funnel folks to us to, to fill those spaces. But we don't think we're going to have any issue filling up those, those meeting rooms.
Aesthetically, is there a reason why? You put the, you put everything together, I mean, it's like we got office suites and then. Storage.
So we have the offices, we have the offices in the northeast corner. And really the reason for that is because they've got direct access. There's two points of access right off Magenta Way, and they're sort of separated off on their own. Where the, the open air access for the storage unit itself, the storage facility is centrally located with its office. For the storage building located to the west of that. So we want to kind of create that degree of separation so that there's a. A sense of place for the office space versus the storage building itself.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was looking to.
Maybe one more question?
Sure.
Mr. Warner.
You might not even know this answer, but do you have an estimate on how many employees we're talking about?
So full-time will be four employees when the place is up or running. And we're not, not talking about construction jobs, but once the facility is up. And operational, there'll be four employees plus whatever maintenance and landscape staff that would be, you know, hired locally. And then in addition to the, the office spaces themselves, the folks running.
Yeah, I guess that's really what I was inquiring about is the office space. So you would have no idea how many employees there. Is it enough to satisfy city council?
We hope so. I mean, it's fifteen hundred square feet and in talking with city management and planning staff, we think that that's a supportable number. If you look at office space, it's by your code, it's really divided by parking ratios every three hundred square feet. If you look at it that way, it's five independent office spaces, but we do have a flexibility to create, you know, either larger spaces. You know, to see however the use is, right? Whatever the demand is, we have the ability to kind of create that flex space and respond accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So your conditional uses just part, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Warner.
Yes, sir, thank you. So your conditional uses primarily for the, to allow for the storage unit to also be a part of that.
That's correct. So the conditional, yeah, in order to do self-storage in any zoning district, not just community commercial, you've got to ask for the conditional use. And to satisfy, we hope satisfy, the council's request, we've added the office space component to that.
And now final question, because we've ran into this problem before. It looks from this, from this rendition of the artistry that is two stories. So is that where we're maintaining and that's what we're keeping, or we're coming back looking for a conditional? Or three stories?
No, sir, it's a two-story facility.
So it's just, just.
It will stay two stories, yes, sir. Part of that is maintaining the kind of harmonious component with the residents to the south. Those are also two-story structures or variation of one and, and two-story. Facilities, so we don't want to be foreboding, and we want to blend into that, that landscape.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions. I, I. What is office flex space? What does this mean?
So office space would be private office space. It's not necessarily retail, but it could be retail. We look at it more marketing towards the professional. The professional. Person coming in, you know, working in their own office. Again, maybe it's not a home office, but it's a home office away from home, if you will. It could be a tax accountant. It could be, you know, it could be a single State Farm insurance salesman. It could be something along those lines.
So you're going into the project having fifteen feet, fifteen hundred square feet to work with? And you're going to solicit for tenants and based upon, you know, what you get, who's interested, you'll, you'll build the suit within that footprint?
I, yeah, that's the intent. So they're, they're twenty-five feet deep and seventy-five feet wide, so we've got some flexibility on where those interior walls are going to go. So that we can, you know, kind of build the suit, if you will.
So structurally, it's really the same building. You're just carving out, it's all under the same roof, right?
It's one singular building.
One building, and now you're carving out this footprint, as we'll refer to it, for this flex office space. How does that substantially change this from a storage facility to? What makes it substantial?
My understanding is because the previous application did not include the second use for office space. That the inclusion of this particular use, the addition of it, justifies a substantial change.
And how many square feet is the building?
Uh, I'm gonna, I want to see. I should know this. I'm embarrassed that I don't know it off the top of my head. Give me two seconds and I'll tell you. So I've got two numbers in my head, so I'm doing another one. No, no, I have it. It's fifty-four thousand square feet.
Fifty-four thousand square feet?
Yep.
So. Fifty-four thousand square feet and we've changed fifteen hundred into that.
That's correct.
Am I, am I doing bad math saying that's like three or four percent of the footprint?
That's correct.
Three or four percent, and that's, that's a substantial change. Okay, well, that subjective decision has already been made, so that's neither here nor there.
Well, it was made by the city attorney.
I know, I, I know, the city attorney's office, the subjective decision.
I don't mean to interrupt.
No, you're good. What do you got?
I just approached with one more item.
Yeah, more info. I am. I like information.
So I think it's important to recognize that this, this project. Isn't just a standalone project when you look at it as a whole. So again, what you've got in front of you is sort of a snapshot, again, from the property appraisers map of the overall area. The box in red, again, is tonight's si- storage facility site location. With the areas outlined in yellow are the, the additional commercial acreage that is in this, this quadrant. That is all owned by the same underlying entity, and it's approximately sixty-two acres. So this three point six acre site is about six percent of the overall commercial development that's being, that is. In process of getting developed out there. Now, why is that important? It's not to wave a wand and ignore your concerns, but it's important, I think, to recognize that. The entire sixty-two acres certainly can't be self-storage. There is a need out there and we want to be able to fill that need. However, we also recognize that on the balance of these parcels, you're going to have your stronger. Commercial entities. Albeit, we're hoping for, you know, a grocery store, a home. A wellness facility, like a gym, something along those lines, you know, a home shopping type environment. Another gas station, I think it's going to be before you, this evening for that. So there are more intense. Commercial uses that will be coming your way, that will have the higher employment ratio that you guys are looking for. There may even be a standalone office building as, as part of this, as we continue to, to work through the market conditions and, and trying to. Build this site out. So I just want to point out that it's not just this piece, that it's part of a, a larger whole. And so you will end up seeing that variation, I think, in the commercial environment that you guys are looking for.
Thank you for that texture and for this added visual. It's very helpful. Do these homes on. Car- Carmelion Drive, are they already built?
They are in, there are, the model homes, I believe, are getting ready to be started, but they have not been completed yet. Yes, sir.
So that to say, there's folks that if they show up to the model center today and they, they choose their lot. They could be, be choosing these lots as soon as right now.
Sure.
Okay, because I'm just trying to understand, you know, how soon there will be residents, residents affected. I think you've done a good job at, at showing what the buffering will be and so on. But I think that those folks will, will have the ability to make conscious decision, which, you know, which lot to choose, which I think is very important, that freedom of choice. The other notation I have, and forgive my lack of geography, but how far would you say that this intersection or this site? Specifically is from Heritage High School, roughly?
As you drive south, you're probably close to three miles, and then you have to take another, and then you go down Malabar Road.
Right.
Which is probably another three quarters of a mile, I would say.
Yeah, leading question, but you know, directly in front of Heritage High School, they're building a storage facility. And that storage facility came before this board to. Change up what they were doing and basically parcel out some of their property and not choose to do storage. But basically parcel it out and do something else commercial. And so that's just kind of i- i- in my head. Again, as I said earlier, I'm an open book, I'm sharing what's going on here. As far as market saturation goes, I'm seeing that, that served the area and a different, you know, applicant. And I'll, I'll ask a clarifying question here in a second, you know, kind of scale back of what they want to do, even though they had the property and the ability to do it. Is this end user, I think it's extra space storage, is that the same? Storage company that's going to be down there, or is that a different brand name or what?
It's a different brand name.
Understood, okay. And I asked the square footage. I think that concludes my questions.
If I, am I able to kind of tip back on that? So the, the still storage parcel that you're talking about about around Malabar, again, it's important, remember, you've got the picture in front of you. Four thousand homes coming. Right now, there's fourteen hundred and sixty currently under construction. That's the entire east side. At that southern piece, you've got the project to the north, St. John's Preserve, which is six hundred and thirty units. Plus a hundred and seventy-six townhomes that have not been constructed but are on the books and approved. That's directly behind the Publix. It's under construction right now. As you go east, there's Malabar Springs. That's a total of eight hundred and seventy-nine units. The first three hundred and seventeen are currently under construction. Directly south of that is a project called Stellar Casetus, which is in the process of starting their construction package as well. You also have, I'm going to call it Chaparral, because I can never remember what the real name of the project is anymore. That's its historic name. Is just east of Malabar Road and the Parkway intersection. I say all of that because there is a significant amount of residential development in that area to support. Not only that facility, but certainly this one. Again, from a market study perspective. This just makes sense. There's nothing within that three-mile radius. And we think we're going to be, you know, rented out very, very quickly. If we wouldn't, if we did not think that, and the market analysis didn't indicate that it would, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Do you think that the type of home that's being erected in, in all of these projects you mentioned, including the ones that immediately abut that? Has some sort of influence as to why folks would need storage? Because when I look to the very well-established neighborhood, just directly to the, to the east, if I'm looking at the map right, you know. What used to be the end of Emerson and all those homes, my curious mind says, what all those people do with their stuff before these magical solutions of storage units came?
Sure, well, in. So, yes, there's a variation of house size that's being constructed down here. They vary from sixty-foot to forty-foot to fifty-foot to. I'll call it a villa, which is your duplex unit, to townhomes that are four, six, and eight-plex buildings. So there's a combination of folks, and the tailoring for that is, there's a couple of reasons. One, it's buy your first house and move up in the neighborhood as you. Grow your family, grow your career, you sell the smaller home, move to the larger one. And conversely, as your kids start leaving the nest, you still like where you live, you've made a lot of friends, but you don't need this big house anymore, and we want to downsize. So in between, you know, moves and upsizing and downsizing, where are you going to put your stuff? There's places to put that, or places where you need to put that. Not to capitalize on the current hurricane situation, but it is hurricane season, right? So we've got a lot of snowbirds that come down. They're used to having a basement. We don't have those here. What becomes the basement, your garage? The second hurricane comes and you can't get your car in the garage, guess what happens? All that stuff ends up in the living room momentarily, and then you go, what am I going to do with all this stuff? It's hard to part with your stuff, especially when you've downsized, and so we see time and time and time again, people will come and rent those smaller spaces. To put all this stuff that they can't quite get rid of. There are, you know, Ha- Halloween decorations, Christmas decorations, and all those sorts of things. And what we find is that they actually enjoy that better because it's climate-controlled, it's cool, it's not full of the bugs that it is for mine garage, like going up in the attic, which is never a fun experience. And so we do see that they're just used time and time and time again.
An interesting case study for a sociologist. That being said, I have no further questions. Does anybody else on the board have any questions for Ms. Saunders? All right, thank you so much. Okay, board, having heard all the evidence and asked all of our questions, do I hear a motion pertaining to this case?
Motion to approve CU two four zero 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 four.
A motion by Mrs. Jordan, seconded by Mr. McLeod, to recommend for approval case CU two four dash zero 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 four. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
So that passes three to two. We'll move on to new business item number five. Which is case number CU two four dash zero zero zero, zero seven. And I will defer to Ms. Ramos.
So this one is just down the road. It is the Heritage Corners Seven Eleven. The applicant is again Ascot Palm Bay Holdings. I believe they're represented this evening by Derek Ramsberg from. Kimley Horn and Associates. The exact location is west of an adjacent to the St. John's Heritage Parkway Northwest in the vicinity. West of Emerson Drive. The future land use in this area or on this lot is commercial and the existing zoning is community commercial. The site is approximately two acres. And this is a conditional use request to allow retail automotive gas and fuel sales in the community commercial district. It is meeting all of the requirements for retail automotive gas and fuel sales. In analysis, though, I wanted to point out, no more than two corner lots at any intersection shall be used for. Retail gasoline. At this site, the northeast corner of Emerson Drive and St. John's Heritage Parkway has also received a conditional use approval. That was in July twenty twenty-three. And currently, there's a site plan in review for a Circle K at that location. So this will be the second gas station at this intersection. The other thing I wanted to point out is, you can see on the other map that was with the. Yeah, right there. You can see that the site is actually surrounded by county zoning. And that is AU, which is an agricultural residential zoning. So when I researched the property, it found that it looks like this area was annexed into the city in two thousand and three. And the future land use in the area was designated in two thousand and six. But the portions that we see still having county zoning have not received a city zoning classification at this time. So one of our criteria is to make sure that fuel pumps. And, and things related to the gasoline will be at least a hundred feet from any residential uses. So. The future land use, which I don't think is included here, but I think you can see it on the site plan, they did delineate it for me. The future land use, which is all city classifications. When you're looking to the south on that site, so yeah, right there. That is where the future land use changes. South of the site, it's high-density residential. So there's about fifty feet between the high-density residential and their property line, which has a commercial future land use. So that gives them over a hundred feet before they would get to any potential future residential zoning. So I just wanted to point that one out as well. But otherwise, they are meeting all the requirements. Oh, I did, I did want to mention as well, this site is also showing an accessory car wash. I just wanted to point that out because it's a little different than some of the other sites. Yeah, they have an accessory car wash, which is just the drive-through right there. But otherwise, the site is meeting all the requirements for retail automotive gas and fuel sales, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Having heard the staff report, board members, is there any questions for staff?
Uh, yes, sir. So the fifty feet that you, the fifty feet that you're reporting now. Is, will they be required or do they already own it? Are they required to?
It's not part of their property. That's off of their site. There's another fifty feet, so it's like seventy, seventy-one feet. From the last fuel pump that they're showing to their property line. And then there's an additional fifty feet off the site of commercial future land use designation. So that gives them more than a hundred feet. Otherwise, I mean, they could potentially just take a fuel pump out and meet that requirement too. It's just as it's shown.
So are there any administrative changes that, that, that need to occur? Prior to hearing this or?
I think the plan is fine as it's shown. You know, of course, there could be small adjustments made when you get into the detailed administrative site plan review. But as it's shown right now, it, it's meeting all the requirements.
Ms. Ramos. Are we able, and perhaps we have to ask the applicant, but are we able to enter this? Are we able, and perhaps we have to ask the applicant, but are we able to enter this map that Ms. Saunders provided to us on the previous case into the record for this case, because I feel like it would be useful to me. But I don't wanna look at it if it's not part of this case.
I don't know about entering it into the record, but I mean, it, it is the same area.
Alright, so on this map that I don't have in my hands, is this parcel, this uh, two acre? Two acre parcel, the plus or minus two acre, alright, I'm not looking at it though. That was my only question, thank you. So will the applicant or their representative, uh, please approach and make a presentation?
Good evening, thank you for meeting tonight, uh, my name is Derek Ramsberg with Kimmy Horned Associates, uh, two hundred South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three two eight zero one. Um, so, we're here obviously for the conditional use to allow for the convenience store with fuel sales in a commercial um, center or community-centered district. Uh, we've been working with Ms. Ramos and staff to come up with a site plan and application package that would meet all criteria um, as, as required. And we think the, we feel the gas station at this intersection of Emerson and Saint John's Heritage Parkway is a very good location for a, for a new gas station with all the development, the expansion of Emerson Road. Um, all, there's also a there's, there's also not many gas stations in this area, um, there will be one coming on the uh, catty corner. Collecting all the northbound traffic, this one collects southbound traffic, um, the extension of Emerson Drive will be able to collect eastbound traffic, they'll collect west, so it does fit, and it's very um, consistent with the development program in the community. And the future development program, especially with the four thousand single-family homes coming in, the commercial across the street. Um, we think it will be very good and consistent use and, and fit the, fit the area very well. Um, we uh, agree with staff's, staff's recommendation for approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, sir. For the record, there's no letters in the file pertaining to this case, I'd like to open the floor to public comment and ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Sir.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street Southwest. It's not so much that I'm in favor of just this development, it's in favor that I wanna see commercial coming into the city of Palm Bay. But with that, I have a couple of questions that maybe the builder or developers can answer. The first question was, who is building Emerson Road? Because it's up to the east side of Saint John's Heritage Park where they're showing it on Emerson Road. But there is no Emerson Road there, who is building that? When are they expecting to see that, is, is Emerson Road gonna be dependent upon this divi- uh, business coming in? Right, that's the first one, the next question was, they're showing on their do- in their documentation that there's a traffic light at uh, Saint John's Heritage Parkway and uh, Emerson? And I don't remember there being a traffic light there, what's the status of that traffic light, is it dependent upon this development? And the other question was for the, to, the developer, was they held their public input meeting by Zoom? And I thought we had just changed our city ordinance on that it had to be an actual development in our LDL. Or it had to be for your public meetings had to be within a building, but I'm not sure. So that's just one of my questions, and then the other question is more for staff, but you guys might have some input to them on this. Was, we keep seeing continually a conditional use for gasoline in co- in community commercial. So maybe in our land development code, we should already include gas in our el- in our com- uh, commercial development. Cause we have to constantly say, yeah, we want that there. I can't think of anything, you know, almost every commercial business that's on corner, intersection, or something like that, is gonna have some kind of fuel system to coincide with it. So maybe it's just something we need to modify, because our land development code, I was just told, is a living, breathing document. It's not set, it's made to be modified and changed. So, if that's something that keeps coming up, maybe it should be changed, but that's for staff and not for this development. Okay, so the primary one, who's gonna do Emerson? Meeting by Zoom, and is the traffic light there? And if not, I thought it was, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll ask the applicant to respond.
Thank you for your, for your comments, so for who is building Emerson Road, it will be the home builder that's coming in for the four thousand um, lots that's going in there on the west, so that'll be part of their application, it'll go in under that construction, and then um, per what I know, it will be dedicated to, to the city as a, as a r- public right of way. Uh, so no, it, it does not depend on our business, it will be there. Um, but for our site plan and our planning, we wanna make sure, as well as with the traffic light, we wanna make sure that we're planning for the future. And what's coming, since it's imminent, and we know, we know it's there, so, um, we're planning for that with, um, with everything included. Um, we're working with them, um, to make sure, um, our design and everything is consistent with wi- with their engineering program and all that as well. Um, public community meeting via Zoom, um, so we did send out the public notices, um, as requested by the city. Um, and we did have, I think, one in attendance, and we held that, and um, there was no o- opposition or anything.
Understood, thank you. Board mem- uh, floor is now closed for public comments, cases brought back to the board. Board members, uh, any further questions for the applicant or for staff?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warner.
Uh, my, uh, my question is gonna be looking at the intersections, I know we got the intersections for, this is probably more for staff. But I know we got the intersection of Pace, as well as, um, coming off of, um, Malabar there, and we also got the intersection here with Emerson. And there's actually one more, so the question basically is in our code, are we, are, I mean, with all of these different intersections, we're gonna end up where i- it would be it would be okay, the way that, the way that is written, that within, within a matter of not even a mile. We, we're, we're, we're still, we're still can allow two more gas stations down on Pace. Two more gas stations off of, uh, off of Malabar, two on Emerson. And, and then, I can't remember what the other, what that other interse- uh, intersection is down there. But there, there's three intersections that's almost uh, not, not, again, not even within a mile of one another, I, I think, actually, I think two of those intersections are probably, probably a half a mile apart, if that. And so when, 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 uh, be- because of the way that is written, when everybody comes in looking for uh, this, this, this community commercial. And, and, you know, like, like Mr. Bill just said, Mr. Batten. That would allow them to be able to just go ahead and put a, a, a gas station there, so what we're gonna end up with is just like what we have here on Malabar, where every it, it, it feels like every two to three hundred feet, there's another gas station, there's another convenience store. So is there something that, in the, in the, is there something that we can uh, change in the code that will either give a little bit, uh, uh, some more, some mileage in between one gas station to another? Cause if not, as, if we look, as, as, as we're looking at this now, there, there's actually nothing stopping the one gas station that's previously coming in, and then this, then, then if we approve this, this gas station being almost diagonally across from it.
So I think that anywhere the gas station is allowed in the city, it's always a conditional use, and I believe that it's um, I, it's not in the general commercial zoning, so I think it's highway commercial and lower, and then I I believe it goes down to neighborhood commercial. So it's a limited zonings that would allow a gas station, it'd always come to you as a conditional use. Um, if it's not in an intersection, it still has to meet, um, criteria for what level of a roadway that could, could have a gas station on it. Um, and so I think that's why you have those criteria, I think especially the two at an intersection, so that you don't end up with four at an intersection. Um, it, it's, this is the limit that's already been set, but you could potentially have more gas stations at another intersection right down the road. It would come to you as a conditional use first, though.
Okay, um, it, cause, cause I mean, it's, it just feels like the condition, even it, even it, even when it comes as a conditional use. It still restricts, um, all power, especially if it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, but if it don't belong, it just don't belong. So, alright, thank you.
Alright, that noted, um, I do have some questions, but I always like to defer to the rest of the board, no, no question. Uh, my questions are for the applicant. Um, what's your construction timeline as far as how soon you'd like to get this project going?
Yeah, so we were obviously going through, um, the planning zoning meeting today, and then slated for city council, I think the seventeenth. So we'd be looking at submitting a site plan application, the administrative site plan application probably within a couple of weeks after that, so probably looking at second quarter of next year.
Gotcha, uh, a follow-up to that is, what's your plan to, uh, have access to electricity, power, to? Power your site?
With the, um, the expanded development of the area, they will be bringing power, um, to this area, as well as utilities, and we'll be, we'll be connecting to those.
Right, so just for clarification sake, you're gonna break ground and actually do construction once power is there available to you?
Correct.
Understood. Uh, would that say that your project is also contingent on the traffic light existing?
Uh, no, so it's, it's contingent, well, we're just planning for in, in this instance. Um, if for some reason that traffic light wasn't to come in, we, I mean, that obviously would mean the Emerson extension didn't happen, so we'd be connecting off Saint John's Heritage Parkway. Um, but it's not, the, it can't, it's not, um, requ- uh, required to have that traffic light, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, and then furthermore, if the Emerson extension doesn't exist by the time you guys are ready to go. Will you simply just carry on with the, the Parkway right in, right out? And maybe, you know, create your driveway butts to, to the future, or, you know, will this hold your project up?
Correct, it would, we would likely just continue with the right in, right out, and then we'd stub out for a future connection whenever Emerson did come through.
Understood, understood. Um, okay, that, that, that's the clarification I needed from you, sir, so I appreciate that. Any further questions?
Mr. McLeod. Not a question, but an observation. As one who uses Heritage Parkway quite often. I'm happy to see a gas station coming there, and I'd love to see that stop sign. Cause I've seen people flying through there, not stopping at Emerson and causing issues. So I'm pleased that this will be going there. I'd like to gas up before I go up to nine to five.
Absolutely, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, sir. Alright, board, having heard all the evidence, asked all the questions, do I hear a motion pertaining to this case?
Motion to approve CU twenty-four zero 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 seven.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Jordan, seconded by Mr. Borma, to recommend for approval case CU two-four dash zero 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 seven. Assuming there's no further discussion, I'll call the vote.
Maybe have a
Mr. Borma, please.
From my recognition, recognition here, there's three stoplights that are being purchased by the city, temporary lights. That are, one's already in, I believe, at Malabar in that Parkway. And the other two are gonna go at Pace and Emerson, so they're already planned to.
Can the staff validate that, I know about the Malabar and Parkway, is there a temporary light in plan for Pace and Emerson? No.
That's up to public works, and you would have to ask them, I'm so sorry, I know that they did approve a couple um, with temporary lights, but I could not tell you where they were going.
Okay, I guess my comment is that it's, it's imminent, that it's, there're gonna be lights there.
Yeah, it's funny you mention that, Mr. Borma, because, I mean, those temporary lights, I mean, they probably run on generators or something. But huge concern that I have is this standoff that's going on with who's gonna run the power out there. Circle K is not there, because there's not power yet, the traffic light can't come in until Circle K does, neither one wants to come in until the houses do, the houses don't really want to, till the power does. Somebody needs to put the power in the ground, and we need to get this thing going. Uh, because to Mr. McLeod's previous point, this is a hazard to our citizens, we need a traffic light, but that's a, a half a soapbox moment. Let's keep it germane to this case, um, any further dialogue? That said, I'll call a question, all those in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. That brings us back to our old and unfinished business item, which is case Z two-four dash zero 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 four. And I'll defer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair, board. We have a case, uh, the applicant is the city of Palm Bay. And this is an administrative rezoning from RM ten to RM fifteen citywide, and comprising of about three hundred and sixty-one acres collectively. This change is being made for a few reasons, number one, to make it consistent with the comprehensive plan, number two. Uh, you, as you know, you heard back in August, a case which was a text amendment repealing our entire code and adopting a new one, that new code eliminated the RM ten, single-family, multifamily residential zoning district. And so with that, we need to rezone these properties so that they can have an actual zoning district that's in our current code. That being said, I did place in the staff report a table showing some of the, uh, primary differences between the two, as it is proposed. What, um, I wanna highlight is that we did increase the maximum building coverage for single-family. We reduced the setbacks, and we now have requirements actually for every district of impervious sur- uh, surface ratio. In addition to that, for two-family, uh, lot requirements, we reduced the lot size. Multifamily. Essentially, everything remained the same, except for the building coverage, which increased as well as the height. That being said, uh, staff is recommending approval of case Z twenty-four zero 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 four. If you have any questions, I am here.
Alright, um, thank you, Ms. Jefferson, um, I'll note that added to our, um, record, I suppose, was this document that, that is this, uh, that is this ordinance, and then has this business impact estimate. Um, that, that's pertaining to this case, right? Can you, uh, just give some texture to it?
So this is a, a new legal requirement, uh, in the state of Florida, I'll let our attorney cover this, you have it for information purposes only.
Okay.
Right, that's the, the economic impact statements are now required on, by Florida statutes. Or zoning ordinances, or ordinances that change the zoning, um, zoning designation of a property if the ordinance is generated or initiated by the local government. This, this statute still exempts applications by property owners to change the zoning of their property from being subject to the economic impact statement that is required under one, chapter one sixty-six.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And Mr. Chair, I do wanna point out, just because she sat here all these hours, we do have a representative from the school board. Uh, in our meeting tonight, Ms. Karen Black. And this first case is, you know, this administrative case is probably the only case that would have been applicable to our, uh, agreement and our, um, need for having a, a representative on the board, but she has endured tonight, and just wanted to recognize her for being here.
Well, I appreciate your presence, and let me ask Ms. Jefferson. It, can, can this young lady be our official designate, and perhaps even have a nice comfortable chair next to you, besides the, the banquet chairs that are still here years later?
As I understand it, the way, uh, this particular school board works in this county is, they appoint people like you, uh, rather than actual school board staff, do you? Is that correct?
Please.
First of all, I'm glad to be here, and I'm more than happy to come to any meeting where there's a residential component that you may have some questions. I usually do check in to see if there's something on the agenda. Um, we are currently, I'm the manager of facilities planning. And the way our district works is, uh, our school board makes recommendations to appoint volunteers to sit on local planning boards. Um, currently, as you know, you do not have one. Um, we are open to suggestions for volunteers, so if you know anyone that would like to uh, volunteer for your board, they would basically, you would give the contact information to me, and then I would contact them. I would talk to them about what the position entails, they'd be a non-voting member. And they, and then I would give them a manual, take them out to lunch, train them on all things school concurrency related. And then they would be introduced to you, and they would sit on your board, well, our board would approve them. You know, our board, they would have to go before our board, the school board would approve the recommendation, appoint them, and then they would meet you and sit on your board. But in the meantime, I can come, since we don't have representation. Meet you and sit on your board. But in the meantime, I can come since we don't have representation in this area.
I greatly appreciate that. I must ask the clarifying question to further understand this. The school board has to appoint the member that joins us.
Yes, per our inter-local agreement that we have with the county and fifteen local municipalities. The way the inter-local agreement's written is that the school board may appoint. One member to each jurisdiction's planning and zoning advisory board. And then that member is a non-voting member. However, the inter-local agreement or the law from the, the legislation does not say. That the municipality can't give voting rights to that member. We have only one agency that allows the member to vote, and that's the county currently. Um, so typically, they're a non-voting member.
But they're normal citizens as opposed to employees of the school board?
That is correct. They are volunteers and they are citizens. Um, and they're usually a recommended person by the school board member of the district of the municipality. So the school board member of this area, I believe, is Ms. Katie Campbell.
Well, relatively speaking, yes, because we're split, but yes, for the majority.
So, she would make a recommendation, or if someone else brings someone suggestion. Then we would take it to her, and then she sometimes reaches out to them, or most of the time she does reach out to them. And then after she reaches out to them, I reach out to them. If they're interested, we train them. I, I train them, and then they report to me if they have any questions, if they. Need any assistance. If you guys have a question they can't answer, they can always contact me and bring the answer back to you.
Right.
Their role is to be educated on all things school concurrency related. Um, they're, they're here to answer questions when they arise. Um, they get copies of our staff. I do it when um, a developer brings a subdivision in for approval. And they do the school concurrency application, and I process that, and I write my staff letter back to. The, the uh city, then they would be copied in that, and they would be trained in how to read. The response letters and know about the concurrency issues or availability or nonavailability. And what's going on at the school board. So, so they're basically. Eyes and ears so that I don't have to attend every municipality's meeting.
Are you local to Palm Bay?
No. But I'm not far. I'm, I'm, I'm Suntree, so I'm not.
Well.
Twenty minutes.
I'm just gonna say, I greatly appreciate your presence. I've seen, you've been here a couple times, and I've been. All but begging for further information to understand how we get some representation. Um, because one, I won't get into it right now, but we need more schools out here, and I'd love to talk to you offline about what you got in the works. Moreover, we need a representative, so just this, this information you just shared is revolutionary to me. I appreciate that you've shared it with us. Um, and yeah, I guess we'll, we'll go to work in, in, in our capacity. And with our council's capacity to find, find that right person to really add to this, because we need it. Now, I will ask you pertaining to this item, because you are here and you, you've stepped up. Is there any um concerns that the school board would have with this adjustment?
No, I currently don't have any concerns. I do see that it would increase the density slightly. But for, especially for a multifamily, um, building or, you know, units. Currently, our, our multi, our student generation multiplier rates, which are how we convert the number. Of units that are proposed into the number of expected students. Um, we recently, two thousand and twenty-two, reduced our student generation multiplier rates for multifamily housing. So, even though this may increase the density on a multifamily unit. It will not really substantially increase the number of students that we could expect to be generated. When we redid our gen- our student generation multiplier rates, which we do every five years, we did them in twenty-two. Um, so we are constantly keeping an eye on what type of housing is generating students. Of course, we know that single-family housing right now and has always in the past. Generated more students than a multifamily apartment unit. Now, that being said, townhouses are still single-family attached. Um, but with the multifamily, when we redid the rates in twenty-two. We had a lot of trouble finding students that lived in new multifamily housing. Now, that could change as the economy changes, so. Currently, I'm monitoring the, the multifamily generation rates, and I only have one. Community that I have. Noticed. In my checking throughout the county, that's countywide, that is. Generating more students than the multifamily rate, and that is in Suntree by the old Petty's Meat Market. Next to the post office. For some reason, that neighborhood has a lot of students, but most, and I've checked. The ones around one ninety-two. Ones that are complete, that I know are complete, that are almost a hundred percent occupancy, I'm checking routinely and. Calculating their student generation multiplier rates, and all of them are. At our student generation multiplier rate or below it, except for that one. So I don't expect an influx of students from this zoning change.
Thank you very much for that articulate answer. That's just one little follow-up question. Do you oversee just new facilities coming in? Or you just overall the, the condition of the existing facilities, maybe their need for expansion and things like that?
Okay, I work for planning and project management, so my depart- our, our department, I'm not the manager, I'm the manager of planning. And then we have a, I have a director that's over planning and project management, the construction project manager. So with that being said, we oversee all of the hundred and four facilities that we have countywide. And new construction, so it's existing uses, I oversee uh portable use. We just recently put um, two portables at Sunrise Elementary to handle the construction down there. And we moved three to West Side. Um, elementary, and we are currently working with the city and the local developers to. Uh, look at our school sites that we already own and future school sites in the south area and the western area will be. On, you know, it's definitely on our radar. So yes, we work with existing facilities and. Building additions and new schools.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. Thank you. Board members, any clarifications or anything? No, we could took that information. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we know that the school board exists.
Ain't that the truth?
I, I have a question for Ms. Jefferson.
Yeah, Mr. McLeod.
I, I noticed the height change. Is that to accommodate apartments? Cause it's went from twenty-five to fifty feet.
Yes, that, that is to accommodate the uh multifamily.
Thank you.
Alright, so given that our staff presentation and, and our applicant presentation are one. Um, the only thing we're missing here is opening for public comments, and we have one, so please, sir, share with us.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street Southwest. I personally am against this modification change. Because what I, the way I see this, when you go from an RM ten to an RM fifteen, it over condenses. The population, right, for the current infrastructure that we have. Our infrastructure is so slow, so slow in the accommodation for the growth that we are seeing. When we start allowing more growth in a higher condensed area, we still haven't increased our. Infrastructure to keep up with that growth, right, i.e. uh, smaller lot size. We can get more homes on for that same area, right? Higher height allows more homes in the same footprint. And there's a less buffer besides from this, from the standoff, so you can get more res- more. Development in a smaller footprint. All of those things generate more population. Which means more how, more cars, more need for water and sewer in for the same infrastructure. That we're having a hard time keeping up with. So, that being said, there's already RM fifteen sites that they could be using. If they wanted RM fifteen, and there's already RM ten sites that they could be us- utilizing. So why change everything to the maximum without changing the criteria for the infrastructure to coincide with it? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Uh, I'll ask, uh, yes, ma'am.
Susan Connolly, thirty-nine oh one Dixie Highway. Just some general comments. Um, one is on the process of the P N Z board and the uh growth department. Uh, it was mentioned tonight about citizen participation plans, and at that particular hearing. There was one citizen that was heard by Zoom, and I would like to just see a change in. The notification process for citizens, particularly in areas that are underdeveloped or don't have. Uh, many citizens there, that instead of the five hundred foot. Um, requirement, that that be increased to a thousand, maybe even fifteen hundred feet. To encourage more citizens to uh be notified and to participate. Uh, my second comment has to do with just, I'm trying to logically figure out this whole process. And it seems that um. When a business comes before the board to request a planning, a land use and zoning. Um, I hear over and over that. For uh, actually a, a caution to the P N Z board. And to us in the audience, that the focus is very narrow at this point in the process to just approve. Land development, the compatibility um. For this type of decision. It, so when we all come forcing over the traffic and. Some of these things that are later on in the process, it doesn't make sense that we cannot consider them at the beginning. Um, it seems out of order. They seem connected and directly related. So I just wanted to point that out, that uh, I don't know, I'm struggling with it. And I really see the, this board struggling with some of the issues that are quite clear. What this development is going to bring later on. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for sharing, ma'am. Ooh, I will defer back to staff for any follow-up to these uh, comments and inquiries. None.
We hear you and will.
Noted. Thank you. So, board members, uh, floor is now closed for public comments. Case brought back to the board. Uh, after hearing all the evidence, are there any further questions or a motion?
Motion to approve Z twenty-four zero 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 four.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Mrs. Jordan, seconded by Mr. McLeod to recommend for approval. Case Z two-four dash zero 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 four. See no further discussion. I'll call a question and ask all those in favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion passes unanimously. It transitioned us to, back to new business, and that's new business item number six. We're gonna bring up case Z two-four dash zero 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 seven. Defer.
Thank you.
Ms. Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have here the case again, the applicant being the city. Where we would um, like the board to recommend approval to the council. To rezone from BMUV Bayfront Mixed Use Village to UMU, the Urban Mixed Use District. And this comprises of about twenty-nine acres. This is being done to make the land development code consistent with the comprehensive plan. And as you know, when we adopted the new land development code recently. This particular district, BMUV, was actually renamed in our code to UMU, Urban Mixed Use District. Now, to go over some of those proposed changes, I'll highlight that we still are requiring. Non uh residential uses to hold to architectural standards that are in our code. We are changing the nomenclature of some of the. Uh, uses that are enumerated in the old code. We are now allowing some of the conditional uses such as um. Eating establishments, uh restaurants with uh outdoor tables. That sort of thing that you would expect in a mixed-use district. Those things were conditional. Now they're permitted outright. And uh, the prohibited uses and structures um, for this district are enumerated now in the permitted. Uh, use table, and one of the primary differences you might see is the. Side corner setback uh has been adjusted from twenty feet to ten feet. By and large, there's not a whole lot of changes here. Staff is recommending approval, and I'm here to take questions if you have any.
Thank you, ma'am. Members of the board, hearing staff report, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none? For the record, no letters. Floor is open to public comments. Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Seeing none? Close the floor to public comments. We've heard the evidence. They didn't have any questions, but just in case we do, bring it back. Do I hear further questions or a motion?
Uh, well, I, I do have a comment.
Mr. Warner.
Alright, I, I. I, I pretty much just have a problem with um, I, I, I believe that a lot of our districts, a lot of the areas that we. That have been in Palm Bay have been um, identifying factors, Bayfront been one of them. Um, I, I realize that we're expanding some of the um, uh, the uses. Um, however, I, 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 I just can't um, these next two items support the. The uh, change from the bayfront to um, to, to, especially with two urban. Um, mixed use, so I'm just. I, I just, I don't know, I, I had a problem with that when it was first, when it was first presented, and um, I just still have a problem with it, so.
I appreciate you sharing that, Mr. Warner. I will uh, make a statement and have a follow-up question pertaining to it. I hate um, being shoehorned into doing anything. Um, I think that, you know, the sunshine laws are very clear. We can't hold ceremonies for things that have already been decided, but my, my personal humble view on this is I don't see that we have much of a choice. Given that this uh, bayfront in, in and of itself, Bayfront Redevelopment District doesn't exist any longer. And this, this use itself isn't in our, our new code and our new comprehensive plan, but I would defer to staff. To s- to further understand that.
What I can say to that is if you were to recommend denial of this request. It would move forward for the council to consider, and if they would uh, move forward with the denial. Then we'd have to go back and amend the code essentially.
To be compatible with the current bayfront nomenclature.
Well, remember, this is a, a map change. All of these other provisions are already in our code. So it just would be a name change. On the map. That, that would be essentially what you're denying, the, the name change. Of these properties that currently have a zoning of BMUV. And the consequent, well, the, what would happen is if you guys made a recommendation, then the council. Followed that recommendation, we would make an amendment to the code just to change the name back. Everything else is already done. It's just that the map has not been changed.
Thank you for that clarification. That noted, is there any further questions for staff? So, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Z twenty-four zero 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 seven. Is that right?
I think we have one, two, and zeros.
Oh, whatever.
This one. For all clarification's sake, Mrs. Jordan made a motion, it was seconded by Mr. McLeod, to recommend for approval case Z two four dash zero 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 seven. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call a question and ask all those in favor. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, that motion passes four to one. That brings us to our, uh, last case of the evening, new business item number seven, and that is case Z two four, excuse me, dash zero 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 eight, and I'll defer to Ms. Jefferson.
Mr. Chairman, same circumstances for this case. This is an administrative, uh, request for rezoning from BMU, Bayfront Mixed Use to CMU, Community Mixed Use. And it involves a hundred and seventeen acres collectively of all parcels in the city with the current zoning of BMU. Staff submitted the factors of analyses, which were provided in your, your report. And we are asking you to make a recommendation for approval as essentially this is a name change. And you did have also as part of the staff report, the differences which were already adopted by the council between the two districts. There not being many, I'll say that we still require the architectural standards. And then we made, um, specific lot size requirements for the different types of uses allowed as opposed to just across the board saying one acre is the minimum lot size for this district. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Members of the board, having heard the staff report, are there any questions for the staff? Seeing none? For the record, there are no letters in the file pertaining to this case. I'll open the floor to public comment and ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition of this request. Seeing none, I'll close the floor for public comment and give one last chance to ask any questions or perhaps to make a motion pertaining to this case.
I will keep in with the same comment that, um, we are moving to identifying markers of the city by trying to uniform it into one, um, one big city of Palm Bay, even though it's, it's part of the city of Palm Bay, but I, the, the Bayfront has always been its own identifying marker. Just like, uh, Miko and some of the other surrounding areas.
Noteworthy, um, any other feedback or motion?
Motion to approve Z twenty-four zero 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 eight.
All right, so I have a motion by Mrs. Jordan, it's seconded by Mr. McLeod. And it is to recommend for approval case Z two four dash zero 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 eight. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call a question and ask all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion passes four to one. That brings us to a conclusion of our agenda items. Just like to thank everybody for their time this evening and I will consider this meeting adjourned.